Twenty-fourth, for the record it is one oh seven. If you'll call roll please.
Mayor Barone?
Present.
Councilmember Hahn?
Here.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Here.
Steve Raell, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance please? Mr. Raell?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll just remain standing and just a brief moment of silence, you know, we're getting ready to enter a holiday season of Thanksgiving and Christmas and just want to, you know, a moment of silence for those families that are quite not as fortunate and that their lives will be touched during this time of Thanksgiving and Christmas. Thank you. Counselor, we have the item five, approval of the agenda, and just make a recommendation, if we could, I'd like to amend the agenda to move up items thirteen A and B and also since there's a number of people in the audience, it looks like for under twelve A that we can move those two items up right after presentations. So move on.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
So approval of minutes of October twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, workshop meeting minutes, council?
Vote for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion, do we hear a second?
Yes.
And a second, no discussion, call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
So we're going, item B, November twelfth, two thousand fourteen, regular meeting minutes, council?
Vote for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Motion, second?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
So go ahead, item seven, awards and recognitions, Amy? Introduction of new hirees, thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm pleased this afternoon to report our new hires, our recently new hires, and I'm going to call a couple of them that are in the audience up here and the rest I'll just name off. First I'd like to call Janice Martinez, and she's recently been hired in the finance department as our fixed assets finance assistant, so go ahead and come on in. And I'd like to introduce you.
And welcome.
Janice started with the Towne's House and she used to be the transit assistant and then she recently got rehired in the finance department, so we're pleased to have her.
And council, you know, I think it's just important, you know, as we get new employees into the town that we make sure that we at least can match a name to a face and it's a great opportunity and again, welcome aboard, so.
And next I'd like to call Josh Mondregon, Josh recently got hired in, effective as of November tenth, in the public works department in recycling division. Thanks Josh, we're happy to have you.
Thank you, Josh, welcome.
And I don't see any other employees that were able to make it to the meeting this afternoon, so I'll just go ahead and name them. We've also hired Brissa Martinez and Everett Huber to be working in our emergency communications as new dispatchers, and they're not here this afternoon. We've also hired Matthew Mondregon and he's our new fleet mechanic for public works. We've also hired Antonio Garcia as a rec specialist and he's with the youth and family center helping them for the winter season. So those are our new hires.
Thank you, welcome all aboard.
Thank you.
And Mr. Bellis, you had something to add?
I just want to say that I think it was, it was great that we finally got somebody in assets and just in time for the audit and it's going to pay big dividends and she's done a fantastic job so far trying to go back and reconcile records from years and I want to give her our thanks for doing so much in such a short amount of time.
Thank you. So then, thank you again, so we'll go on to item eight, presentations, resolution fourteen sixty-three, Supporting Health Security Act, and we have Mary Felbrum? No? Don't see her? From the, go ahead.
I suggest we push it down on the agenda and see if she comes in and take it later.
Okay, so we just table it, now motion to table?
Motion to table.
We have a motion to table, we have a second and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
So next we have item, we have, we moved up item, we'll take on matters and reports from the mayor first, and we're looking at resolution fourteen sixty-four, sister cities, and Mr. Lopez, I would give you this opportunity, this is something that's, we've done in the past for another town, Jalisco in Mexico, and we'll reaffirm that, but for now we're talking about A and this is, this is a city in China, so. Tell us a little bit about it and.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, with me is Xu Zhang who, I want to stand up here quite quick, why don't you stand here. Xu Zhang is from Santa Fe, you went to Santa Fe?
Yes, Santa Fe High School.
Went to Santa Fe High School and graduated in what year?
Two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight, and went there when he was thirteen years old?
Yep, I moved to United States when I was thirteen and honestly, I live in United States, Santa Fe, so I've been here almost fifteen years, so it's my hometown.
Fifteen years, and he and his father Kevin Zhang own the Asian restaurant at twenty-four-hundred Cereals in Santa Fe, which is one of the greatest restaurants I've ever been in actually, and he was there with, he has two daughters, his oldest child is Amanda, who's four years old, was born four years ago on Thanksgiving Day, and is absolutely the most beautiful little girl you've ever seen in your life, and she is four years old today, it's her birthday, but born on Thanksgiving Day. So first of all, I would like to award a certificate of appreciation to Xu and also there's one for his father Kevin, who's actually in China, has been there for the last two or three weeks and won't be back until next month sometime. Kevin and Xu came up and met with the mayor with an invitation to the town of Taos to become a sister city with the city of Jinjing?
Jinjadjin.
Jinjad, say it again.
Jinjadjin.
Jinjadjin, China, which I've given and attached to the agenda some information concerning the city, it's an art community, big, huge art community that one has in the area prepared and designed and made different ceramics for emperors from the beginning of the history of China. It's also known, the region for its porcelain, and I've passed around a brochure, a magazine, which shows the pictures both of the porcelain and of the ceramics that it's known for the district. Kevin and his son Xu have been to Taos a number of times and thought that because Taos is such a great art community that it would be, it was actually an invitation that was extended by the city in China and I thought it would be a great sister for that city and so they came and introduced themselves to the mayor and we did some research, found, spoke with Carl Lopez, who's a former city councillor in Santa Fe, they have a sister city in China as well, and we also, I learned that we have a sisterhood that began in two thousand one with the city of Jalisco, Nayarit, Mexico, and so also on the agenda today is a proposed resolution for the council's consideration, reaffirming our relationship with the city of Jalisco, but also in this instance is a resolution, proposed resolution for your consideration, establishing the sister city relationship with the town of, and I'm not going to butcher the name again, say it again please.
Jinjadjin.
Jinjadjin, China. And finally, I would like to extend the certificate of appreciation to Xu, and there's one for his father from the mayor and the town council of Taos.
Thank you so much, council.
I'd just like to add that there is a sister city organization in the United States that it's an international organization, actually we have a chapter in the United States which enables and promotes the sister cityhood with cities here in this country, with other cities throughout the world, and there's a lot to be gained by the establishment of the relationship. There's travel from people from Taos to Xinjiang and also to Jalisco, once you get there, if you can prepare for your own airfare, everything there is taken care of, you have a place to live and your, your food is taken care of and the travel, and it also is a good possibility for the promotion of economic development between the two different sister cities. And so I think it's, it's based on the research that I've done, since Xu first showed up a few months ago, it's, I think, a great potential and possibility for the town of Taos to follow in the relationship both with Xinjiang and also with Jalisco. And so, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Well, I just want to say, you know, it's very good opportunity between Taos and China because more population come over and more tourists come in, and especially the culture is much, pretty similar between the Chinese old culture to modern, you know, Indian culture here, I think it's good chance the connection, you know, it won't hurt to do anything.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselors.
Thank you.
Thank you, what a great opportunity for us to move forward with a sister city within China, and counselor, what's, council, what's the wishes? We have a resolution before us, adopting this resolution, let's move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Yes, so we'll go on to item B, a resolution fourteen sixty-five, sister city with Jalisco, and Ms. Lopez, this is a reestablishing a sister city, basically this is, again, you mentioned that it was started in two thousand one and I think it hadn't been carried forward, now we just want to make sure that they've come to us and asked us to continue this relationship and.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you is a, is a copy of the agreement that was actually signed by the mayor, I think it was Mayor Pedalta of the town of Taos in two thousand one, and the mayor of Jalisco at that time, and they, the agreement was in both English and Spanish, and that's attached to the agenda, also is a proposed resolution reaffirming that agreement, there was an agreement that was adopted through the sister city organization that I earlier referred to. Cindy Pettis of the executive department was able to establish contact with the current mayor of Jalisco and he's very interested in, as I understand it, there was a delegation, at least one, but I believe more than one, that three, former Mayor Pedalta says, three delegations from Jalisco that came and visited Taos, and I think there was a group or one or a little more that went from Taos down to Jalisco and for, I think, in recent times that a relationship has diminished a little and the current mayor of Jalisco is very interested in reestablishing the relationship and so before you is the, for consideration is a resolution that would reaffirm the sister cityhood with Jalisco and hopefully that would progress as well.
Counselor Pedalta?
Mr. Mayor, if I could give you a little history, the original visitation by Taos to Jalisco was in two thousand, one year prior to setting up the sister city, and the invitation was through the ICMA, National International Association of City Managers. And so that's how the first invitation came about, and at that time Oscar Rodriguez was working for ICMA and working in Mexico trying to establish within their cities a professional management system, most of the cities down there do not have managers, the mayor or what they call the presidente of the community is actually the one that does the managing of their government, but the problem is because that changes every three years, there's no continuity and so ICMA was looking at trying to assist Mexico in trying to establish a much more professional management system within their government, and that's how we got the invitation to go down there and show how we were operating up here in, in the United States and in, in New Mexico in government. And from that then, the sister city program was established, and we did, under my administration, we had three or four visitations to Jalisco and they had an equal number up here, and I can't remember if under Mayor Duran they had one or so also, but it was a very good exchange of culture, there are also an arts community, so there was that, and we were trying to establish a economic development program between the two cities. There are also a area that is a coffee plantations, so we were working with them also to establish their product in the United States.
And the home of tequila.
Counselor?
And the home of tequila.
Oh, okay.
No, no, that's ninety miles away.
Close enough.
Yeah, the city, the city and, and tequila is ninety miles from Jalisco to the south.
All right, any other comments? None, what is the wishes of the council?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second, motion and a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, and welcome, thank you, and we look forward to working with you. So next, item twelve, town manager's report, marketing contract, Mr. Bellis, discussion and consideration and possible action regarding the renewal and extension of the marketing contract with Griffin and Associates?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there's a recommendation from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Committee dealing with marketing that the Griffin contract be authorized through the balance of the fiscal year. Currently, and I believe the primary purpose of that is to allow for better long-term planning of the spring/summer campaign, currently that contract at the direction and advice of council is on a month-to-month basis, however, actually the budget is approved once submitted by the contractor on a quarterly basis, the contract has always been reimbursed on a month-to-month basis. I'm not sure there's a big change in that, one of the things that would be happening is, once we got that marketing committee up and running, currently I've been reviewing either the campaigns or the individual ads or ad buys, and it's always been envisioned that would be transferred over to that marketing committee for advice and direction. Just as, some background, we, the LTAB board participated in the interview of four candidates for the position of marketing and tourism director, that was narrowed down to two. Later in the agenda, we have an executive session to discuss personnel and that would be one of those matters. And that's really about all I have to say in regards to the matter. I know there are a number of people that want to speak, in fact, I got a call last night from Monique Jacobson, and for some reason because of the news article, it's become an emotional issue. Let me, let me first say that it was never planned and no one had ever said that the contract with Griffin and Associates was going to be terminated, all that happened was that marketing committee asked for, at Griffin's request, as I said, to be authorized through the rest of the year, which I don't see that's much of a change from what we're But it's a complex issue and Mr. Mayor and Counselor Hahn have been at, I think we had three meetings with the public to discuss marketing and tourism and, you know, you can make numbers say anything, so I think we could spend a lot of time today where someone says, numbers are up, and we could show numbers that say numbers are down, and I guess it depends on what perspective you look at it from. So I would suggest that beyond consideration of that request, that there be a workshop at which we hopefully will have our new marketing and tourism director and the LTAB members can attend and other folks can attend, but the direction we have been taking to date is based on what came out of those marketing and tourism meetings at which everyone, including our marketing and advertising contractors, market Taos, which was then Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, was part of, a good number of the merchants in the community and a number of folks in the marketing and advertising business, and that's all I have at this time.
Counselor Pedalta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bellis, just for clarification, the recommendation is from the advisory board is to change from a month-to-month to basically end the contract in six months, or extend it for six months and not on a month-to-month basis anymore.
I believe that's correct, you know, I don't see the, is Laurie here? I think in speaking with the contractor per se, what they're really asking for is that rather than having to go through the town for permission, they will plan, that the contractor will plan out the campaign.
Through the end of June.
Through the end of June, and I would state, I guess I do have one more thing to say in regards to that, and that is that I don't have a problem with that, what I've asked for along and what is in the contract for the contractor is that they provide a market plan and a campaign that's designed and a budget for that, and I have had a lot of difficulty getting that. There was a presentation to the marketing committee at my suggestion at the last meeting, I'm not sure that satisfied what the council or I were looking for, but I do have a problem as the town manager signing off and getting a stack of paper at the end of the month that are variable expenditures. We amended the contract to include a flat fee of about forty-five hundred dollars, I believe it is, so that we knew what we were paying for the service from the contractor. And when the bills started coming back, we were additionally still getting billed various percentages which I believe went anywhere from seventeen percent to thirty percent and higher, depending on what the particular air buy was, and I'm not sure that, you know, when our auditors look at that, they're going to be happy with the idea that we didn't authorize that additional amount of money to go to the contractor, and by what the contractor buys, they can construct, and what kind of deal they work out, they can construct how much their fees are coming back. So in effect, you as the council don't determine how much money goes to the contractor and how much goes to advertising, the contractor does that, and I, I think that without some sort of supervision authorized that, it creates quite a problem for myself, the finance department, and Francella that review those contracts, because we're asked, basically, we've spent this money, we've hired a team to meet with some press people, and we bought them lunch and took them here and there, and we'd like to get paid for that, and if we can't get paid for that, we can't buy you more advertising. So I don't think, you know, again, if we want to get into the numbers, I don't think that's hurt anything, I think that in fact, our GRTs are up, but again, I'm sure there are people in the audience that will disagree with that.
I thought I remember from the contract that the fee that would go to Griffin and Associates for their portion was seventy-five thousand for the year, period, so it wasn't based on a percentage of placement or anything like that, as I remember it, so if you take that and divide that by twelve, that's what you pay and the rest of it goes to advertising. So, you know, we just send back the invoices and say, correct them. But am I wrong in the way I read the contract?
That, Mr. Mayor, council, that was my understanding of it, however, since then I've had the marketing committee and the contractor explain to me that it is standard industry practice that if a, if we contract with Griffin or anyone else and they do a radio buy, that let's say they buy a thousand dollars worth of radio ads, they get a discounted price because we go through them, so let's say we get it for seven hundred dollars, and I don't have a problem with that, but what I started to see was that we were then being billed three hundred dollars to Griffin, and the explanation was, well, we saved you three hundred dollars, and I'm going, no, well, you shifted it from advertising to administration. And I still don't believe I have a satisfactory explanation for that. Now, while I understand that may be industry practice, we are a government entity and we just can't do that, we can't let a contractor determine what the outcome of a project is, of the cost rather, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm still going to go back to what I understood the contract to say, is that, you know, any discounts that they get are strictly discounts, but we don't pay for those. Unless they have an arrangement that is outside of our contract with a placement bureau or a magazine to pay them a fee for, for buys, that's, that's something else, but it shouldn't be coming through us.
I, I agree with you, counselor, and that's the position we've assumed going forward on this contract.
Well, you know, my feeling is that we need to continue this contract through the end of the year, fiscal year, simply to give the opportunity for the new marketing director to look at it and see what, what they feel about it, and analyze and see how it's working or not working. However, if, if what my understanding of that contract should be, then maybe we need to amend the contract in that regard, that what we are obligated to pay according to contract is that amount of money per year, and everything else is outside of that, and so placement of costs is placement of cost.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Rick, I guess the thing I have problems with is, as you mentioned, a lot of emotion has, has been around this issue, and the problem that I have and the sentimented echo that I'm getting even out of the LTAB, and I sat on the LTAB, I mean, five years prior to become elected to this office, and it was a sentiment that was echoed back then even to Mayor Cordova, was that it didn't feel that the LTAB had a voice, they were more just a rubber stamp board, this is the direction we're going, approve the invoices, they've already been paid anyway. The problem that I have with that is that we're looking to LTAB and their, their now newly formed committees to help us make some of these decisions, I mean, after all, they're the professionals within the industry. Problem that I have with it is that, I mean, still today, I'm getting emails that echoes a very different sentiment from the administration, and I have problems with that, I have problems with that because it doesn't give me a clear direction as to where our advertising is going or whether or not it's even working. So, I mean, I would ask, you know, much like we place the burden upon the planning and zoning commission, to give us direction of planning issues, that we allow the LTAB board to have the discretion as to how marketing funds are basically disseminated. to have the discretion as to how marketing funds are basically disseminated as well, too. So, I mean, I guess I'm looking for, I guess, an answer from the administration as well, too. And I sit, you know, partly guilty to that, for not having enough, you know, involvement with LTAB, but it just seems like it's been a one-way branched street, and I look, again, to the members of this community, LTAB, the experts, to kind of give me direction as to where those marketing funds should be. So, I mean, I don't know how your sentiments are on that. Could you elaborate a little further? I mean, that's been the gist of my emails over the last week.
Mayor, council, I'm not, yeah, I'm in total agreement. I mean, that was, you know, we structured the LTAB to do exactly that, to become more involved and have the decisions made by that organization, rather than the outside subcontractors. I'm not aware we're in any disagreement between the LTAB or any of the subgroups and anything that's being carried out. I'm bringing their request here today at their urging.
Well, and Rick, that's part of the problem that I've had, you know, well beyond just this issue, is that I'm finding information out from the media, you know, and I'd rather have this quashed two weeks ago, and saying, "Counsel, that was not the discussion, that's not the case." But, I mean, I'm getting it via email, and that's what bothers me, you know, is that all set of members of the community are up in arms, saying, "Well, what's going on? We're canceling contracts." And I'm sitting there saying, "I have no idea." You know, so, I mean, it's just, as soon as stuff comes out, Rick, we need to be more transparent with our constituency base as well, too. I mean, we're the guys that are on the front of the lines. I mean, we're not a U.S. senator that you can't reach out and touch. I mean, I see these people in grocery stores at mass and everywhere else, so, I mean, it's not an easy road to toe if you don't have the correct information. And again, when I'm getting requests from the Taos News or Taos Friction or otherwise, and I don't have the answers, it's, I need something.
And I just want to step up and say a little something, Counselor. Counselor, you know, we gave Rick direction on how to go about this contract, and that's what he's carried out. I mean, we went to a month-to-month contract, and now it's come back to us because of something that came out in the paper. That's why people are here today, because something that came out in the paper. And whatever comes out in the paper, not necessarily is true all the time, you know, and it seems to be, we weren't canceling a contract, our intention was not to cancel a contract, because we had already given Rick direction, and that's why we've been formulating this month-to-month contract.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I completely understand the direction we gave our manager, but I still expect to be informed outside of those decisions, because at the end of the day, we're the body that needs to make those decisions.
And again?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, I think at some point, you know, you need, you've been here a long time, and I know you know this community better than I do. When you make a shift in policy that takes money out of one contractor or group of people and shift it in another direction, those people are going to bite back. And I don't think that the kickback now from that group of people is any different than it was when we held the three meetings with the community on marketing and tourism, which is they, there was a, there were two sides, I guess, and one is, is it the priority of the town to drive heads-on-beds, or is it the priority of the town to drive GRTs, which may result from heads-on-beds? And if you're a hotel, you want the town to spend as much of the taxpayers' dollars advertising your hotel as possible. And if you're a business in the downtown, you're probably saying, "Why are we marketing the ski valley? Why are we marketing the pueblo and the gorge, but we never market the arts in the downtown?" So I don't do policy, but I can assure you that, yeah, I know that K-Tas not happy, I know that Taos News is not happy, I know that DMC is not happy, because we didn't just write a blank $30,000 contract with them and say, "Let's use marketing money to pay for the Easter egg hunt. Let's use marketing money to pay for a lot of things that should have been done as public services." And I think that's a uniform approach. It's not singling out any one contractor, and that was sort of the approach with marketing, with Griffin and Associates, is this council expressed dissatisfaction in particular, not just with the way things were being done at the Tuesday Marketing Group, but that there was a specific ad and a specific slogan, there's a name for it, that I think the council felt, "How did that slide by, and the town manager didn't know about it?" So you directed me to put a process in place where that kind of thing wouldn't happen without your knowing about it.
And I can completely agree with that. I mean, I've had my issues with regards to marketing, too. I'm talking more about how the information's been disseminated, because there's individuals that, you know, and I, since the beginning, Rick, I've had an issue with the month-to-month contract, and really, it's because of the fact that you can't schedule marketing buys on a month-to-month basis. And, you know, I'm looking at this, and my reaction, I was in New Orleans when I read this, my reaction to the newspaper was, "What are we doing? You know, we're coming into one of the busiest seasons of our tourism time, and we're looking at acts in the contract." And, you know, again, I mean, just as soon as that came out, I would have appreciated an email, phone call, something, saying, "That's not the case." Yet I was left to go through the entire weekend, and, you know, I know I've reached out to you to try to get in touch, but at the same point, you know, these are the issues that entrench us in disagreements that we don't need to be in. Again, you know, I think we're all after the common good of what's good for this community, and I can't put a price on either one of those issues, be it tourism or GRT, because they're both vital and crucial to this community and our operations, you know, the services that we provide to our constituents. I'm looking at this and saying, "Well, marketing," and it's proven because of the fact that we're the only entity in this entire state that's up on GRT revenues, and we've taken our hits. We've had our ebb and flow. But I think consistently over time, it's been showing that something's working. And, you know, over the course of the last couple of months that we've been on a month-to-month, we've seen the decreases. That's my concern.
On GRTs, I don't think that's correct. In fact, we're up.
Lodgers.
Lodger's tax, we are down. However, I'd also ask you to remember that last year, you had the League of Municipalities Convention here for a week, too, which is probably why you had more beds filled.
It was the year before, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I sit on the LTAB board, and I started going probably a year and a half to their meetings, and at that point, every month, Ms. Griffith was there every single month. And when we started, I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong, was it January that they had stopped having the LTAB board meeting? Or February, Joni?
No, we, LTAB.
Because it was like seven months.
Are you talking about the Tuesday Marketing or the LTAB?
The LTAB, because we reconvened like in August. It had been an awful long time before, since we had had an LTAB meeting.
It's not the six-month gap.
Yeah, and you were there giving reports every single month, and since we reconvened, it would really be nice if she was there, and for transparency's sake, to come in front of the council like Marietta does all the time and update us, so that all of us will be in the know of what's going on. And Lori Moreau, I think she, you just came in, she's the chair for the, sorry, marketing committee, and I'd really like to hear from her. We've been getting so many emails from everybody, I think it's just crucial for her to come and speak to us.
Sure, I'll let him bed her up. Sure.
Where do you want me?
Right, right.
Right here?
Yes, ma'am. You just might want to make sure the mic is on and pull it towards you if you would.
Okay. How's that? Is that working?
Yes, ma'am.
Everyone here? Great.
I can hear you.
Well, I started serving on the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board in October. I was approved in September, and appreciate the opportunity to serve. And my concerns are several. I know that my quotes in the paper were a little paraphrased, and I'll grant that Rick's probably were as well. But I think we all know that we depend largely on the tourism dollar in the town of Taos, and we have government as a big employer, but we've got to put, bring people to town, and as with any brand, if we want to call Taos a brand, whether it's Coca-Cola, McDonald's, or Santa Fe or Taos, you've got to advertise and stay in front of people's faces to get them here, and we're embarking in more and more social media. I know Griffin and Associates has a strong presence there, and web design assists in a lot of those efforts. But what I want to underscore here is that lodger's tax is generated by lodgers, and by statute, a certain percentage of that is supposed to go back to bringing lodgers to town. If we promote special events at the expense of bringing lodgers to stay with us, we see not just a reduction in lodger's tax, but also in grocery receipts tax, and then you have less money to do anything with, whether it's to do a special event or to advertise and do your PR efforts. Because fewer lodger's results and less money for all of us, it's just simple math. We have had conversations in what was kind of the Tuesday morning meeting, and the Tourism Council is a group that formed in kind of a bit of a void that they felt there was in the community to have a cohesive marketing message, and feeling like there were opportunities that were being missed. And what I've heard from that group, as well as folks that serve on the marketing committee, is that we're getting behind by not having a consistent marketing effort. You can't really go month-to-month. I hope you all had a chance to read Kathy Connolly's very well-written email to that matter. But it's very difficult to have a marketing effort if it's month-to-month. And we had recommended in October at the marketing committee, which was in some minutes, that I then submitted to Rick, that we continue the contract with the current marketing firm, Griffin and Associates. Now, the council can choose at any time, you know, when we've got a new RFP to go with someone else, to not do work with Griffin and Associates, but be that as it may, we have a very dysfunctional relationship between the town manager's office and our contractor who's being paid. I hear complaints that calls aren't returned, emails aren't returned, and we're missing opportunities. It's hard to quantify the return on a story that may appear in Sunset Magazine. That's going to get you more bang for the buck, so to speak, than an ad, because people know you didn't pay to be in a magazine. That kind of PR effort, you can't quantify, but it's very valuable. When we have a decrease in lodger's tax, that to me is when you say, "Okay, what we're doing's not working. What can we do better?" And I think that continuing to advertise and have a strong PR effort's very important. Even if we put on special events so that there's things to do, you still have to advertise the town to get people here to stay. So we have had some media buys that have been bought without consultation with our marketing expert, which I find to be of big concern. I'd like that relationship to be more functional, and I'd like to be reassured that when the members of the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board and these subcommittees meet, that we're not just talking to ourselves for fun, that you guys are actually getting our recommendations. And I heard from Fritz that he hadn't threw a second party, and so I forwarded the October minutes. I haven't typed up the November minutes, because frankly, I've been too busy fielding phone calls from members of the community who thanked me for speaking up, and then just trying to get heads in beds at the Sagebrush. So lodger's tax being down to me is a sign that we need to, again, have a cohesive plan in place. And I think if there are things that the council feels like they're not getting from Griffin and Associates, that communication needs to be delivered to her clearly and concisely, so that she knows what it is you're looking for. The marketing plan she presented last week at the marketing committee, I thought, had examples, good examples of advertising that showed kind of the cultural side as well as the adventure side of Taos. When you have people stay in town, the number I've heard is they spend at least $75 outside of the hotel. We know that there's some that spend less, some that spend more, but that benefits our retail establishments, restaurants, river runners, balloonists, what have you. So to continue, it was interesting, I missed the program on PBS, except for just a sliver. I get a station out of Colorado, and it's called Branding Colorado, and it was where a community spent some time together, defining what are we as a brand? Is it adventure? Is it nature? Is it culture? And we have such a rich, diverse community here, that I think we still have to get the word out about who we are, and when people come to town, I know when we have Keystone staying at the Sagebrush, we pay for shuttles that we take to the plaza and drop people off, and I hear from merchants that that makes a big difference to them. So we see this as a hotel, as a partnership with the community as well. I mean, I'm reaching out to different vendors and providers in town all the time for activities for groups, or entertainment, or things like that. So when I put on my hat as chairman of the marketing committee, I set aside, yes, I am the director of sales for the Sagebrush, but more importantly, what's going to work for the town of Taos, not just my hotel? Even though I have been heard to say Taos is more than the plaza, it is. But, and to that end, we're going to be running shuttles to the south end of town as well during Keystone, so that Rancho's benefits a bit, too, spread the wealth around and let people see more of our history and eat more places. But I think that we need to have some transparency and communication, so that whenever there is a recommendation from the board or a committee, that it reaches you, and then you make your decisions informed, and you may say, "We don't want to do what you said," but at least you've been informed. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. You, at the beginning, when you first started, you said that the other activities that are happening within the community, that those are not paid out of lodger's tax, just so you know that.
Okay.
The lodger's tax fund has not been touched. You still have the same amount that is brought in. Those extra activities were sponsored by the town to help the revitalization, help put heads in beds, help having extra activities within the community. So just so that's clear.
Are you speaking of the congos?
The congos and other, any other, even now for the Christmas, the extra decorations, the excitement that we're trying to host downtown, along with the beseo and anything else, those weren't paid for by?
Okay, because we'd been misinformed or maybe misunderstood that there was, I've heard $5,000, I've heard $26,000 expended by the town for the congos, because you don't just pay for the band, you've got the electrical, you've got the extra police and the shuttles.
You've got police, you've got everything.
Right. So if that wasn't diverted from lodger's tax, that would be great, but that reminds me of another matter. I know that, or I've been informed, correct me if I'm wrong, that 4% of lodger's tax used to go towards the convention center, and I know that we're not managing or maintaining the convention center now. UNM is, is that correct?
Not quite yet.
Not quite yet. So I was just wondering where that 4% will be going, if it's not already going someplace, perhaps. That could be lending itself to some of the events, rather than taking it from marketing budgeting.
Actually, that already has been returned to the budget.
Okay.
As of the beginning of the fiscal year. We didn't feel it was appropriate to keep charging that, so the finance director and myself took that out. I had any staff related to maintenance of any of those buildings placed into the facilities budget, and you're getting 100% of the dollars that are available.
Okay. Well, I know that, I'd seen some numbers that what Griffin and Associates was contracted to spend was cut, I don't know, about $15,000, $16,000, and I don't know if that was to make, you know, save money back for a marketing director, marketing and tourism director that the town's going to hire. Can you speak to that, Rick?
Yes, for one quarter, it was reduced by that amount. I informed the council of that.
Okay.
Yes, that was with the intention that there was a commitment to hire a marketing and tourism director.
Okay. And I was just wondering, too, I know in an email you'd shared last week that, you know, we're getting away from doing local advertising, you know, there's no need to promote tourism in town once you're here, so we're not buying on the radio like we used to, which I agree with. used to, which I agree with. And we're not making those newspaper buys, because people are already here. Let's spend the money outside of town. Is that the intention?
That is correct, that when we review the bills, the majority of things we're being billed for. First of all, I don't believe that local advertising for local events is an eligible LTAB marketing expense. But, and I agree, they don't bring tourists. But yes, that, there were two pots of money that we separated out in the budget this year. So if there's an Easter egg hunt, that's paid for out of, out of the general funds. It's not paid for out of marketing dollars. And as I indicated earlier, no, we didn't just write a check, a purchase order for $30,000 to each media outlet and say, you know, anybody can call up and use that time however they want.
Okay. Well, one of the concerns that, if I can go back for a moment, that I'd heard communicated to me from folks from the Tourism Council and the Committee, is that we need a transition plan. And I know you met with Jamie Tedesco and other marketing experts here in town. If the council does choose to terminate a contract with a contractor doing marketing for the town, we still need a transition period. And I know that if we have, hopefully, crossing fingers, a wonderful qualified new Marketing and Tourism Director starting, they're still going to need some time to get on the ground. And if I were that person, I would be looking to my marketing contractor to feed me as much data as they've got, history, you know, branding, strategies, fonts, logos, everything that's been going on. Because there's a lot, for a small town as we are, we have so much to offer and it's so diverse. And frankly, there's a lot of players. You know, there's people that agree, people that don't agree, lots of different splinter groups. And I'm hoping that that person can be a bridge builder. That's a tall order. But to just get us all to work together and agree to disagree when we do, I might not have made the purchase for the Private Air Magazine. Jamie thought it was a great idea, and that, that's that. But I think that we do need to make sure that if I'm providing minutes to you, that they do get to the council, so that you know what the thinking is. Because I have better things to do than sit in a room and just talk to people I enjoy. You know, I've got a job that's waiting for me back at the office, and I enjoy serving the community and having a voice. Just want to make sure that it's not in an echo chamber, but you guys get to hear it too.
Laurie, if I might point out something, so that, like you said, people aren't making decisions in a vacuum. The Griffin contract, one of the first deliverables is that it has to increase lodgers tax by 2% per year. Okay? In 2010, '11, it didn't go up, it fell. In 2012, '13, it fell. '13, '14. So one, two, three, four, for the past four years, that contract has not made its primary goal, which is to increase tourism. And some months we fell more, but as a whole, we fell four to five years in a row, despite the fact that every year the town, and I can get you those graphs before you leave, spent increasingly from $300,000 to $500,000, they were getting less return. And I think that was what the community was concerned about, is we weren't putting heads on beds, we weren't getting GRTs, and there didn't seem to be a change in plan. What we were being told was, it's always worked, because it's Taos, so let's keep doing the same thing. We're slightly off in the third month of this fiscal year, but again, you know, I would love to hear anybody explain why we're up or down in any given year despite what we do or any given month. But I think there's been this alarm out there that, oh my gosh, you know, we're not planning, we can't do that month to month, there's no spring campaign. Yes, actually, at the suggestion of the Ski Valley, we held back a little on advertising the Ski Valley, because they said they were going to pump a ton of money into doing that. And I think there has been a lot of national publicity on it. So I don't know that that was a bad move. But you can't keep doing the same thing forever. It's not getting better and just think that, that's okay, don't worry about it. At some point, we're going to pull out of this.
Well, and I certainly understand if the council chooses to not have Griffin &amp; Associates as a contractor in the future, but I think for the transition with our new staff person, we need to have that voice heard. And I would just ask that the communications improve. Because I do get lots of complaints. I know you're a busy guy, but if we've got Joni saying to me, hey, I can't get a call back, I've got an opportunity, and I know how crazy it is with marketing. You suddenly get an opportunity, a magazine that would be a great buy for the town, suddenly they can't fill that ad, so you get a 50% discount. You've got to act quickly. So to have some more clarification, until we have the Marketing Director in place and fully, you know, understanding what they're going to be doing, to have a clear understanding, what does the Marketing Committee approve? Do we then approve, send it to you? How do we work that? And to continue to use the expertise that frankly, the town's still paying for in Griffin &amp; Associates.
And Laurie, it's not by month. It's never by month. And I hope Joni will be honest enough, and if not, I'll show you her emails, that it's by quarter. And each quarter should represent a campaign. And she has to present a campaign and a budget for that. The bills have always, since the beginning of her contract, been submitted on a monthly basis for reimbursement. And the, I would love, I understand there were extra media buys and bargains that come up, but it's tough for anyone. It'll be tough for you, tough for the Committee, tough for the Marketing Director, to make decisions on, I need an answer by tomorrow on spending a bunch of money on a radio buy campaign in Albuquerque. Yes or no? Can you tell me whether we should do that? It's 20% off. Well, who are we advertising for? What's the audience? What's the plan? I'm still waiting for a plan. And I know when I spoke to Oscar, when he was here, it was, and I sat where you are, in the audience, it was the same frustration of the town, is what is the long plane, plan? I would love it to not be a crisis, because yes, I'm busy, we're all busy, and it's very tough on a 24, 48-hour basis with little information to decide that's how we're buying our marketing for this town. And if we're doing that, if I did that to the council, I would think they'd say there's something wrong, that I don't know what I'm doing.
Well, I think it's reasonable to say if we've got a radio buy, let's find out what's their listening base, you know, what demographic are we reaching, that kind of thing. So I think that's reasonable to ask for.
And Ms. Griffin has 100% discretion within that budget. The only time she needs to call me is if she says, outside of this quarter, looking forward, I would like to make a buy of money we haven't committed yet. And I have to do that for budgetary reasons.
Like spring break advertising would be outside this quarter.
Sure.
Gotcha. Which I know you did approve. So basically, I just hope that we have transparency between the Committees, the Town Manager and the Council, so that you all are informed and that we have a cohesive marketing plan. And what I had seen presented at the Marketing Committee last week, that Griffin &amp; Associates or Joni made for us last week, looked like a great outline. And perhaps if we need to ask her for more detail, I'm sure she'd be prepared to give that. I'm sure you can ask her, she's here today. I just am relieved that we're not gutting the marketing budget for special events. Events are a great thing, but there are a lot of people that come to town not for events. You know, I hear from people, they come for lots of reasons. And some of what we've done continues to work. I know I've seen statistics that my demographic, the over 50-year-old professional woman, is our number one tourist in town. So let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Let's continue to market to them while we reach out to the Gen Xers and younger folks as well. So--
And just so you know, New Mexico True is getting a lot of bang for their buck right now. A lot of bang for the buck. And, you know, I think we need to, you know, focus a little direction in that. New Mexico True has been, you know, one of them campaigns that is really coming forward. It's really moving a lot of people, and it's really, not only Taos, but all of New Mexico, but Taos is a big player in that. And, you know, I want to say the Secretary of Tourism, you know, has been here several times, and she loves where we live.
She's from here.
And where she lives. So, you know, I just want to say, you know, that's one of those programs that's really coming forward too, also, that we need to focus a little money at.
Well, I know Joni shared with me that there's a lot of criteria and hoops you jump through in order to be able to do that. And I think the intention is to take advantage of that with advanced planning, because you do have to have such, they have to review everything you're going to do.
And we are doing that. And I just want to say, we've hired a grants person. She's already looking at the possibility of a grant to move forward with some of that funding. So we're forward-thinking as far as, you know, looking for additional money to advertise where we live.
At some point, I'd like to do it for my hotel as well. So if you have any other questions or concerns for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Mayor, Laurie, I might also want to point out that I just had a conversation this morning with Monique Jacobson. She indicated, she had a couple of questions at the news article. Since the mayor and I had spoken to her last, we clarified that we're on the same objectives we had laid out in the beginning of the year. She said, I think you guys are a key to the economy of the state. You're going in the right direction. She had some hiring suggestions, but she also said she'd be more than happy to come up and do a training session and bring her staff and work with the LTAB Board and the community on the development of a more forward policy.
I think that would be great. And just appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and to share my concerns and those that I've heard, you know, other folks calling me that couldn't be here, whether it's patching a leaky roof or just having to be somewhere else at this time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laurie.
Thank you.
Mr. Bellis, I think it's really important, if we could at least get a call-in during the Lodgers Tax Board from Joni Griffin, if she's not going to be there in person, just so that, for transparency, so everybody knows what's going on across the board. Because I, you know, I think probably we've all heard the same complaints about emails not being returned and phone calls. And it's crucial, and we need to keep the lines of communication open.
Councilwoman, it's your contract. If you want to say that she needs to be at the monthly LTAB meeting, then she needs to do so.
I'm happy to be there.
Great.
And Mr. Bellis, you made a recommendation to kind of have a work, work study or a work, working group. I think that's a good idea. I think we need to invite Ms. Monique Jacobson. And I think that would, you know, kind of set some, and invite all the key players. You know, I know there's a lot of people that are driving this that I want to say have skin in the game, because they receive monies for, you know, for services. And, you know, we want to make sure that all of them are, everybody's heard, not just those people that are receiving money for services.
Mr. Mayor, actually, I also want to point out that as of, I think it was last week, I don't know, I can't remember, Laurie, but I did send an email to the Chair of the LTAB and to Laurie, saying that all of those decisions in regard to Griffin were now the responsibility of the Marketing Committee, that I was handing those off now that we have the committees in place.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
Rick, earlier this afternoon, we received a pretty blunt email from the Taos News and J.R. Logan specifically with regards to Iprah. Did we take care of him?
Yeah. There was nothing to provide him with. He had attended the meeting and heard the recommendation of the Committee, which you're being presented with today, and wanted a written copy of that. And I subsequently provided him with a copy of the minutes of the group, but from the last meeting, as Laurie had indicated, there's, there was no written recommendation, just a direction to me to come back. And the minutes from the November, yeah, November meeting have not been done yet.
Okay. Don, did you wish to address the council? I thought you kind of raised your hand.
Yes, I would.
Okay.
My name is Dawn Richardson, and I just, Mayor, council members, I did sort of want to get up and just say a little bit about events, because of the fact that, not that I feel like that they're being attacked in any way, but I do want to laud the possibility of going in a different direction, is what we have been talking about. And so my partner and I have been putting on the Taos Solar Music Festival in the center of Taos. And yes, we did do Mumford and Sons as well. But that's, I'm wanting to really talk about the power of festival and the power of events. And more or less, just since you guys are all in the same room, and there are a lot of marketing people here. And so anyway, back in 1999, then Mayor Peralta gave us the last weekend in June, saying that that was the slowest weekend, basically, of the summer. And the main reason being is that it was prior to July 4th. Since that time, it has become basically the busiest weekend in that whole summer. And hotels, who have actually really supported us, not all the hotels, but many of the hotels who have supported us, during that time, they charge, they charged double and tripled the amount that they normally charge, even during Yuletide or during Christmas. So even when we had Lyle Lovett a couple of years ago for Solar Fest, we were sold out all of Taos, and then we also sold out many, many rooms in Espanola and Santa Fe. So we do and have been contributing to lodgers tax for years and years and years. And we have done this on minimal support. And I'd actually like to give a big shout-out right now to somebody who some of you may know, Joy Barr, who used to be the manager for the Fashion Inn. And Joy was probably one of the only reasons that this festival survived during those early years, because of her support. And just as sort of a reminder, back during those times, she and Joe were giving almost $380,000 a year just for marketing Taos alone. That was back at a time when people had more money. But they got tired of the obstacles, they got tired of kind of running against no support, and they went away. Back during that time, there was also Taos Talking Pictures, which was from 1994 to 2003. They survived on government subsidies, which the highest being about 2002, at $750,000. But then in 2003, they went under to the tune of $100,000. And then also during that time, my favorite festival of the time was the Taos Talking Pictures, which was from 1982 until 2003. That was a labor of love put on by Ann McNaughton and Peter Rabbit. And it was an amazing thing that engaged our youth and brought in all kinds of people to town and made Taos a poetry destination, which was pretty remarkable. And that was actually down at the Sagebrush. And all of these, both of those festivals have actually been gone longer than they existed, but they have still left a huge legacy. Taos Talking Pictures, everybody still talks about it. And Taos Poetry Slam, unfortunately, nobody talks about enough, because it was actually an amazing event. But anyway, only to say that, having survived 9/11, the worst recession in modern history, with no outside report, we have been staying alive, but admittedly limping along. And basically, our, by keeping Solar Fest alive and the sacrifices that we made and our longevity in the business and contacts in the national music scene, that's the reason we got to put on Mumford and Sons. And we beat out Santa Fe, Las Cruces, Albuquerque. And they were very jealous, by the way. But there was more international marketing notoriety from their choice of coming here to Taos than any slogan or marketing ploy over the last decade. And not to, not to mention that there was also the Mumford bump at that time, when hundreds of thousands of dollars was infused into this, into this economy. So we are working towards having another Solar Fest, obviously, for the last weekend in June. And we want to be consistent, and we want to be yearly. One of our big slogans is, you just got to keep showing up. But here's where it gets tricky. For one thing, our competition is very savvy. And it's not just festivals that have huge money that is, you know, to pay for the big acts that sell the tickets. It's also all of the municipalities that have figured out that by having big events, you draw people who spend money, who increase GRTs-- spend money, who increase GRT. And so, up in Colorado, even the suburbs of the suburbs are having free concerts like Los Lobos and the Iguanas. And so, people like Palisade, which is a little tiny municipality, paid for having a bluegrass festival, have already increased their tourist and GRT dollars by 50% and have also paid for making these fest... paid back for making these festivals happen. And then, of course, there's Lyons, Colorado, which actually has two music festivals that I have had a hand in helping start because of my association with Planet Bluegrass. But they are now... those two festivals are now the major economic driver for that town, not to mention establishing it as a place to live, and all the musicians who use that as their base now while they're going out on tour, professional musicians. But to get back to the point, you know, I feel like Danny and I want to make Solar Fest a much stronger event, and then we want to help start other events. We're not taking... wanting to take away anything from marketing, but we are really wanting to encourage that we don't do things the same way that we have been. Unfortunately, we, like I say, have had very minimal support, and I do want to say how excited I am with the election of this particular council because I finally see a glimmer of hope for some sort of a visionary future, which does help events come into play. So, anyway, I do think that Tous is a festival town, and I think that we... this would be a great opportunity for economic development. I know that we have been trying to form committees, and we have been trying to do everything else. The other thing that I also sort of believe, this is just opinion, I don't believe that tous.org has sold a single ticket to any Solar Fest event. There's been many reasons for that. I'm not blaming them. I'm just saying that that's just one of those kind of things. But I still believe in the power of festival, and thank you for your time.
Don, thank you for what you've done.
Would you guys have any questions?
Counselor?
Dawn, thank you for coming and addressing us. It's always nice to see you. I'm a huge believer in events also, but I'm also a believer in that those events have to draw more than the local crowd, which, I mean, the hype leading up to Mumford and Sons was extreme, and I think it's hard to duplicate. Well, like...
Almost impossible.
I mean, I completely appreciate the event with the Congos, but Thursday night, not a whole lot of reception. I mean, being a free show, I mean, which was great for the local community, but I think we expensed a lot of money on an event that brought very little back to the community, and which it's always hard to gauge on a free event. But, you know, at the end of the day, when, again, back in public, having to address the concerns of constituency base, those that maybe didn't attend the event, and even those that did, are asking questions, "Well, how much did we spend on that event?" And I get the magnitude of what we spent versus what we could have spent was night and day. The realm didn't exist. But we're talking in a community where GRT funds are declining, well, up and down. Lodger's Tax funds are declining. Our dollars are stretched thin, and I think everybody, including in the listening audience, wants an ROI. They want a return on their investment. And if I don't have anything quantifiable in Marietta, I'm hoping that our GRT numbers coming up this month show something for the Congos event. I'd have something to battle against some of that with. But, you know, I attended, enjoyed it very much. My family enjoyed it very much, but it was a really highly populated local crowd. And it's concerning. It's concerning when you spend taxpayer dollars on events that don't draw additional revenue.
And I'm going to agree with you, Andrew, because of the fact that I think that it would probably be hard to be quantifiable then because it's more anecdotal as far as, like, if you excite the Tousanños, then there's... then that is actually something that's palpable and that people who are visiting then get very excited about, if the Tousanños are excited about their own town. And so, I'm going to say that there's probably a lot of interesting sideways, good things that came out of the Congos, besides the fact that, once again, we were sort of... we were sort of the center of attention in the region, and even Santa Fe was very jealous of all of the attention that we were getting for just hosting that band. And I think that that's something else that events actually can do, is excite its own citizens for their city. One of the things that I loved about Tous Talking Pictures was sitting next to a little old farming couple from Mora, who knew more about film noir than I'll ever know. And it was just very interesting because it is sort of like... it is sort of bringing the world here as well, is part of it. And then that's a sellable thing.
Well, Dawn, I think the events, for me, as you mentioned, a two-, three-day event is really what kind of draws the attention, the excitement and the hype leading up to Mumford, though it was a one-day event, was the fact that people felt they had to... I mean, it was open seating, open... pretty much open venue, but they were paid for tickets that you knew people were going to be here for. They weren't going to expense that kind of money. Same thing with, like, a bluegrass festival. I know you and I have talked previously in how well it works for Lyons, and I anticipated it would work extremely well here, too, because you would draw that outside crowd that would be coming from across the border, for example, out of Colorado, to attend the event. That, in my mind, creates true economic development because then you are putting heads in beds. I mean, they do... they have an obligation, almost, to stay if they want to attend the entire event, and that's, I guess, what I'm looking for, and I would gladly support that any day.
Absolutely, and that's actually more of what I'm asking probably support for, because of the fact that I would like to build several events. I believe that Tous is a festival town, but it's... and I don't believe it's in either marketing or, you know, I would like to see a lot more symbiosis in that. And I'm saying that I appreciate the officials between the mayor, the council, and the manager with the fortitude to kind of stand the onslaught of change and work in that direction.
Yeah. Well, thanks, Dawn. I appreciate all that you've done.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dawn. Don't run away yet. You know, I have a lot of respect for you and what you've done over the years, and all of the organizations that you've been involved in, and Tous Talking Pictures, the Poet Slam, and all of those things, because one of the things that you pointed out in the three areas that you looked at events, and they were long-time events, two-, three-, four-day events, or even weeks. I mean, let's take a look even at the Fall Arts Festival. What makes it viable is the fact that it's not a day, but it is something that you can plan on to come to, and then as it's expanded this year and being more venues, I think it's even, over time, it's going to be a better event than it has been in the past. So, this is what I look at and say, if we're going to make Tous an place to come and experience events, they've got to have longevity. They have to have more than a day, so that we're not looking at people who come from Santa Fe to see the event and then going back without spending time in our restaurants or our galleries or shops or hotels, because all of those together is really what makes the money and not just the event. It's what people do on the side. And so, in doing that, we have to look at how we market the event and couple it with other activities that you can do when you're not at the event. And so, this is part of what I've looked at and talked to people around the community about, when they've said, "Well, events aren't a good thing. They're not doing anything for me." But, on the other hand, what are we doing to make them something that is cohesive within the community as a real experience? And that's what we have to start looking at, is how do we market all of that stuff together and say, "Yeah, when we go onto your website, I can also set you up in a hotel, and I can also get you reservations at a restaurant, or I can also, you know, set you up with an artist that you would like to see," or whatever it is. Those are the type of things that really create the events, as if we could have more of a one-stop shop than just the event itself. And I think that your persistence in wanting to have your program be viable and strengthen it and build it and have us support it, I think is something that we need to support you with. But along those lines, the rest of the community, the commercial community within Tous has also got to come together and say, "This is a program for all of us." And that's what we've got to start doing, is making that gelling of activities within the community to really make us a destination and not just for a day. And thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. And, Mr. Peralta, I think that I agree with you. That's one of the things that the festival does do in a multi-day thing, is like, it... instead of just a computer click or a day trip, what it does is it gives people a chance to get to know the town, to find that favorite restaurant that they wouldn't nor... you know, that they wouldn't normally be. And that's the kind of responses that I'm getting from my audience right now. They desperately want it to come... you know, they desperately want Solar Fest back, just as much as anybody does from just the single-day events, even though the single-day events help keep us in the mind and thoughts of agents and managers and music people. And I'm not negating those, I think, because those have been actually very helpful as well, if more than anything, just to, like I say, just stay alive. But I absolutely agree with you that it's the multi-day events that need to be grown here in the town.
Thank you. Mr. Blair, you had your hand up?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Counsel, Town Manager. I want to sort of simplify things. I've been a hotel owner here for over 40 years. I've served on the County Lodger's Tax Board for 26 years. I've served on the Town Lodger's Tax Board for eight years. And over that period of time, I've seen uses and misuses of Lodger's Tax. And my message today is very simple. I think that the town needs two entities that work together. Those two entities would be, the first one, a professional advertising agency that will go nationwide and get people to Tous. The second entity should be the Tous Tourism Function or Town of Tous Tourism, that once they're here, you provide them with all of the extra incentives and so forth. And these two entities could work together, but you need two of them. We're not talking about the town tourism thing, or we're not talking about the national one. You need both of them. The thing that serves us the best is consistency. Over the years, I have seen the uses of Lodger's Tax used and abused, as I've said. And an example, and this is not an abuse, but in the years when this convention center was conceived, the majority of the Lodger's Tax money went for the convention center, okay? It also went for the chili line, and the chili line was supposed to be for tourism, but it was there for local people. And I'm glad to see the town and their wisdom has moved the chili line to a regular department of the town, paid for by the town, and not Lodger's Tax. I've seen the increases over that eight-year period after our really downfall, and we have done extremely well, and the prognosis for the future is also to be extremely well. So that when you're looking at Lodger's Tax receipts and doing percentages, look at the national trends that apply the same. In other words, is the national trend down, and are we down? Is the national trend up? Are we up? So, don't just judge what's happening here. Equate it to something that means something, not just figures that we're pulling out of the air. So that I think that Griffin and Associates have done an excellent job. With my three hotels that I've had in town, I paid the most Lodger's Tax of anybody, and I've watched what was going on with Lodger's Tax, because I was concerned that money came from the guests in my three hotels, and I didn't want misuse. We are on a good track with what's happening now. Let's not just get all confused about one group, another group, this group, that group. Make it all-inclusive. Get the people here, and once you know they're coming, have the town organization provide all that they need. And this is really, really important. So, with that, I would say that we need to keep on track. We need the national advertising, and I agree that we could do a heck of a lot more locally, and with the two organizations, we could really make things move. Griffin and Associates, being the national organization, over the years, has spent money. We've provided more money, thank God, that the Lodger's Tax receipts have gone up and there's been more money there. But I also acknowledge that Griffin Associates have, over that span of time, provided more free advertising, more free articles in papers all over the country, even out of the country, that have promoted Tous. So, that free advertising, that free relationship only comes with a relationship. So, we've got a lot here. We have got more here than anybody in Colorado or any place you want to mention. Let's use it properly, and let's use it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Any questions? I'm sorry I took so long.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Either one of you?
Hello, my name is Jerry Davis, and I own in on Lolloma Plaza with my spouse and partner, and we've been here... this is wrapping up our 23rd year in December that we've been in business. Can't compete with the gentleman that was just here in how much taxes we've collected, but in our little business of 10 rooms, somewhere over $300,000 in that period of time. But everyone is kind of a tough act to follow. By the way, congratulations on all of the new council members and the mayor. As a former mayor and a council member, good luck. That's all I can say. It's a tough job, and depending on your... depending on your town manager, it can be better or worse, depending on what trouble that he gets you in. But I would like to talk a little bit about outside of the specific issue of the lodging dollars and taxes collected, because there's another whole realm, and I have to give a lot of credit to Fred Peralta, because when I first came to town, it was the deal was, you went to the Lodging Tax Committee and asked for some dollars to promote your special event, and that was pretty much the marketing effort by the town and the Lodger's Tax. But the lodging community, in the form of the Tous County Lodging Association, had collaborated with the Ski Valley and various others, and they were really the marketing entity at that time. And as time went on, and through Fred's help, we did start the bus system, and yes, Lodger's Tax paid for our... tax paid for our portion, the town's portion, and that was supposed to be for, for the tourists so we could get them off the street so we wouldn't have the traffic problems. But it hadn't worked all out that, just like the convention center, it doesn't always work out. But we, we have still a community out there. The Lodgers Association has morphed into Market Taos. They provide an immense amount of marketing to the Town of Taos, a collaborative effort with what is going on. They provide the vacation guide and the website, which someone mentioned that they had not gotten a, any sales off of, but that's not even, the town is not the person or the people that, that do that. That's the Lodging Association or Market Taos in collaboration. And over the years, we've, we've found that to be very effective, because people are paying attention to what other people are doing. The Ski Valley is another. They, they market Taos as a, you know, special place to come when there's people who are skiing, there's things to do. Being from a major ski area mountain community in Colorado, where I was involved in marketing as well, Taos has so much more to offer than most of these other places that are, that we compete with. And my purpose of coming up here is to, to thank all the people that have spent all of the hours. And I know, I kind of dropped out about 2007, been watching on the sidelines, but after the article, thanks, Rick, for, for bringing me back into the fold, I did have to come and, and understand what is going on, because a lot of hard work, a lot of meetings, a lot of hours went into getting to where we are. And I would hate to see that go away because of disputes or misunderstandings or whatever there is. And my final comment is that, and which is always the case, or two final comments, everyone is a marketing expert. And I, actually, I have a question. Are there any people in the audience or here that aren't marketing experts? See, we're all marketing experts. So that's why you need some professional help. That's why you need to have people involved in the community across spectrum. I mean, there's people in the art community, there's people in the restaurant business. All of those people need to be involved in kind of set, what are our goals? What do we want out of, out of marketing? What are our outcomes? What do we expect? That's the input that we need to be giving to then the professionals and saying, here's what we would like to accomplish. I would like to have people come and stay three nights instead of two nights. I'm sure there's other people that have other kinds of goals that they would like to set. And overall, you know, remember, for every, for every five percent lodgers tax that's collected, I also collect six or seven percent in gross receipts. I know you don't get all of that, but, you know, if we are going to improve those dollars in our treasury, we're going to have to, you know, look at all the things. It wasn't too long ago that we were being told, well, tourism is no longer the number one industry in Taos, it's construction. Well, that kind of changed, didn't it? And so, you know, we're back to tourism being the number one industry. So we should, we should nourish it, we should pay attention to it, we should help it. And the council can do that by, yes, making it easier for special events to come and have the right place to have the venue, so forth and so on. My last comment is, we're not, we don't have enough money for marketing. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. So I think we've heard quite a bit, and I'm going to turn to you, Councilor Hahn.
I think you had one other gentleman.
Oh, there was one more, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Mitch Miller. I am, I'm a producer of events, and I wanted to address just a couple of things, and I'll be brief. Councilmember Gonzalez, the, the ability to quantify the success of the Congo shows is a challenge without, without question, but I think Don brought up a good point, and that is, as we excite those that are our neighbors, and they find the, the center of town is a place to go, it's hard to see the effects of that in long-term. One of the things that I've done in my career here in Taos is, I started at the very beginning with Barn Dance. I've been the backstage production manager for Solar Fest, and I've worked on a variety of events throughout the year. I started at K-Taus as a maintenance worker and ended up being the general manager. And our belief was and still is, and my belief was and still is, that we incubate. We start at the beginning and we see something grow, and if it works, we add to it, and if it doesn't work, we either, we give it up, or we, we find out why it doesn't work and we try to make it work. I think that by having events that are in the center of town and that are jointly sponsored through the town's efforts and through those of us in the community, that the long-term effect is that people do get excited about what's going on in Taos. And that the community itself, once it gets excited, it's kind of like as a parent, when you buy the new TV, the kids get excited, the neighborhood's excited, everybody kind of wants to know, what are you doing that's working so well? And I, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater with the thought that if we spend five, 10, $20,000 on events, that there isn't a return on that investment. I think it behooves us to help those that don't see that, to guide them to where they can understand that what we're looking to do is create excitement 10 years down the road. The gentleman just spoke, said the construction industry is down, and that's because tourism is down. Construction was driven by second and third homeowners. They didn't come here, they came here first as a tourist, they came here because they were attracted to what we do here in Taos and what we have available. And I think that to see us continue to create things that draw people to our community, it could be five years, it could be three years, but we're going to start to see those people wanting to live here and wanting to retire here, wanting to bring their dollars here. And as a result of that, we're going to see construction to start to grow again. And I think there is a little bit of a movement in that area, as we start to see people coming back to Taos and getting excited about being here. So my point was, I think that it's, I'm not sure that we would have had a great fall arts kickoff as anything that Congos could have done. I mean, Friday night was phenomenal. Forget Thursday, we knew we were going to get people for Thursday. I was pleasantly surprised at the numbers that I saw throughout the weekend. And I think that it was incubated by the Congo show, and it's hard, again, to quantify that, but I think it was a good step out. And I think that if, if we look to see, if we look to do other things like that that head off the beginning of an event, we're going to see more results that we saw on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for the fall arts, and that's what I wanted to.
Mitch, real quick, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I don't disagree with you on the events. I think where my disagreement lies is within the repetitiveness is where it needs to key in. So if we're going to do something like this and it's going to tie in with fall arts, then it needs to happen every year, because that's the expectancy. I'm talking about the events that are spotted in different locations without the buildup to that event. I was in, again, in New Orleans for training, and I had an individual from Washington DC that they attend the Wool Festival every year, had the best time of their life, and still come every year, have been for the last 10 years. That's the type of event that I guess I'm looking for. And I, I think music is a key to that. I think Taos can be dubbed as, as that next destination for it. I'm, I'm more worried about the quantifiable results and the expenditures that we expense on a one-time event, you know, that falls in the middle. That just happened to be good, but I think there was a lot of boots on the ground for the Paseo for that weekend as well, too. A lot of behind-the-scenes work went in even prior to knowing that Congos were coming.
I agree.
So, I mean, we, we can't give discredit, and while I don't think it, it detrimented that event in any way, shape, or form, because I think it did create the hype. I'm talking about the, the buildup in getting to that, to that point. So I'm all for the events, but again, it's got to be, for me, on, on the other side of having to give justification to why those dollars were spent, the justifiable, quantifiable results that Ms. Fambro hopefully will, will give to us in GRT results.
Well, I think it was, you know, I agree. I think that it would be great if we could have quantifiable evidence of success, outside of smiling faces and people having a great time. It would be nice if everything turned into a, a dollar situation. I think the long-term look is that it does turn into a dollar situation, and I agree with what you're saying. It would be a great advantage to work with the Wool Festival to see if we could do something prior to their event, we being the production community within Taos. And, and other events that are like that, I think that maybe it's time to create the ability to look at those events and determine how might we embellish upon them. And again, they don't all have to be ticketed. It isn't all about, you know, finding a, a ticket buyer as much as it is to increase the awareness of that Taos is a fun, cool place to be, and that as a result of that, you're going to find more heads and beds, you're going to find more people in restaurants. You know, my experience is, when we started Barn Dance, our first year, we had 75 people. Last year, and our budget was about $1,000. Last year, we had, on a flow basis, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 15, 1800 people. We've sold out every room in the Ski Valley. Our budget, our production budget was $50,000, and we brought people in, probably 15% of our audience base is from Taos, and 85 is from Texas, Oklahoma, Colorado, Utah, and Arizona. And, and it worked. But it started 75 people, and it grew to what it's become today. As a matter of fact, we've outgrown where we're at, and we're looking for a new home, and we may be coming to talk to you about that fairly soon. But the point is, is that some, it, it just starts simple and it grows from there. So I thought it was, it was a great idea. And, and I think that the idea of having free shows available to the community at large eventually pays off, and it's a risk. We all take risks, and I think that that's what I want to encourage, that we continue to take risks. They may always be tied into something that's tangible, but I think the long-term effect is, is what we should be looking at. And we're going to stumble as we go, I get that, you know, we all do. But let's not be afraid to move forward. Let's not be afraid to try new ideas. Let's not be afraid to expend, you know, a little bit of money to see if it, if it increases the overall awareness of us as a community, especially within the enchanted circle area and southern Colorado, because those are the people that are going to come to those kinds of events. Ticket events, national acts and that kind of thing, you know, we grew our audience out of Texas because primarily we were bringing songwriters and country music. And we saw our audience base there, and that's what we went after. And now we're going to broaden that. This year, we hope to get a B act, get a, you know, 30,000 or 40,000 dollar act, and, and look at what will that do. We feel we're at the point where we can embrace that. But it took us 11 years to get to this point of trial and error and losing money and making money and, so anyway, I just want to encourage and, and support what you're doing. And I just wanted to say that a little bit about.
And, and you know, I, I agree, you know, and I think the mayor pointed out that the New Mexico True ad campaigns are working. Again, just recently on travels, I was in the Houston Hobby Airport, and that entire Southwest terminal was just lined with New Mexico True ads. And it was, it blew me away, because the ads were of Taos Ski Valley, Taos Pueblo, I mean, 10 out of the 15 ads that I saw were Taos-based. So the state of New Mexico, I think, is doing their part to, to, to help promote us. And again, I think it's because the demographic of Texans that are coming to visit New Mexico, they know who they're hitting, they know who their target audience is. And, you know, I was just blown away that in a, in an airport the size of a Houston Hobby, there was nothing. I mean, I saw no other advertisement for no other place other than New Mexico.
And it's probably going to work. I think we're going to see a lot of Texans coming this winter and, and next summer. And again, like I said, I'll probably be back to talk to you about Barn Dance. We need a bigger home. We'd like to see 3,000 people this year. We, we are a three-day event, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mitch.
Thank you, Mitch.
I, I wanted to let you know, I, I was recently in the Dallas Airport and the Houston Airport, and I, I took pictures, so I'd be glad to share them with you of, of New Mexico True, so.
Awesome. So, Councilor Hahn?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a slightly different perspective. First of all, it's great to hear about New Mexico True. Good to hear that they're going national. Good to hear that they're looking at other sources of advertising. That being said, in my studies around this issue, it's become apparent that a month-to-month contract does not imply the work that's going on in that immediate month. What is happening in that billable month is that the contractor should actually be working three months out. So if I'm billing for December, I'm actually working on March's marketing effort. And I'm presuming that that's the case. So I am not seeing, objectively speaking, a disconnect between long-term planning and advertising, hitting future dates like Easter, spring break, that kind of thing. That should be happening now, and it's my understanding that a contract marketer actually would be doing that, not focusing on December. For a marketer, December's gone. For a marketer, December means March. So that's number one. Number two, this discussion, and I'm very grateful for everyone's attendance and their thoughts and professionalism, this, it seems to me that we're trying to build a building without the architectural drawings. We need a foreman. And that foreman is the marketer for the Town of Taos that we're hoping to discuss later this afternoon. I have noticed in doing statistical and financial research that our GRTs were down in late summer, early fall, I mean, our GRTs were up in, in late summer, early fall, and yet lodgers tax was flat or negative. Now, I understand correlation does not imply causation, but it makes me wonder. I appreciate what Mr. Blair said just a few minutes ago, look at national trends. I think that's a valid critique. But that being said, just to address the Congos just for a little bit, the Taos Fall Arts Celebration was failing. It was on its knees. It was about to go down. And some concerned citizens, very dedicated citizens, started volunteering their time and made that thing happen, and many of you are sitting in this audience now. Congos was part of that. The Congo's expenditure, the $20,000, came out of town coffers, not lodgers tax. The Congo's was kind of a last-minute affair. We found out they were in Denver and flying to Santa Fe or Albuquerque, and they inquired, and we said, sure, and how much notice did we have? 30 days, maybe? Not even that? So I'd like to propose that we try and find a middle road here, in view of the fact that a month-to-month implies that the current contractor should be working on March now, not December. If that is correct, then we don't have a lapse. Therefore, what I'd like to suggest is that we get our marketer, our foreman, our architect in. Get him or her totally involved with LTAB. I can just see there's going to be a lot of 16-hour days coming up for this person. Get them totally involved with the four subgroups in LTAB, particularly marketing. I very much like the idea of a workshop where this professional, this professional marketer, of which I am not, actually comes in and says, okay, here's where we're at, here's where we need to go, here's how we're going to do it. And we're going to, we're going to institute this group and that company and this to obtain this effect. In other words, the marketer that the town hires is going to need to develop quickly a mission, vision, goals, and objectives. It needs to be a well-thought-out approach. And I feel if we renew the Griffin contract now, through the end of this fiscal year, we will be locking in our new marketer into something that we are micromanaging, and I disagree with that. I just, we are not marketers up here. I would, step one, get the, put Griffin on month-to-month, understanding that the work you're doing in December is really planning for March, number one. Number two, let's get our marketer in here, collaborate closely with LTAB, with Joni, with the others. And then, pending that workshop and the marketer's advice, come back and say, okay, this is how we're going to do things moving forward, trying to address some of the events successes that we've had, some of the lodgers' revenue concerns that they've had. The trend line for the Griffin contract right now is slightly negative. So we've got to be honest about that. It's slightly negative. So that's the fact. And yet GRTs overall are up. So there's a correlation. We've got to look at this. And so I'm going to suggest, Mr. Mayor, that first, let's get the marketer in, let's have that workshop with all the players, and develop that mission, vision. Uh, let's have that workshop with all the players and, uh, uh, develop that mission, vision, goals, and objectives. Create the transition plan, I think, uh, uh, Joni referred to that, I think that's essential. But to lock our new hire marketer into a contract that they have no participation in yet, my fellow councilors, I feel is a mistake and ties their hands when they don't necessarily need to be tied. And if the primary argument is that, uh, going month-to-month, uh, is risky and not futuristic enough or well-thought-out enough, I would just point out that a true month-to-month plan, like I said, December is actually working on March. So I send the town of Taos my December bill, but it's really for March's work. That's how it should be. So I would request that we get that marketer in and, and let, uh, let ourselves be guided by their expert advice. That's what we're hiring them for. So let's not put the cart before the horse.
Councilman Peralta?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I, I would disagree with Councilman Hahn. I, I think that the contract with Griffin Associates should be through the end of the fiscal year. And allow, and I think there's adequate wiggle room within that contract for the marketing director to work out whatever program he feels or she feels necessary uh, with the, uh, support of those, uh, marketing organizations within the community we already have. So I'm not saying that we're tying anybody's hands by doing that. But it, it gives that person then an opportunity to analyze and scrutinize uh, what they would like to see in a new contract coming forward from whatever organization. Uh, if we, or they, I shouldn't say, if that person recommends to us that we should have another, uh, marketing agency work with us or not. So it's up to them to find that out, but I think it's their responsibility to, over the next few months, to do that. And that keeps, I think, a certain amount of, of, uh, continuity going within the, the program that you're talking about. So this is what I would say with it, we should do is just say, let's keep Griffin Associates through the end of the year and allow our marketing director then to give us advice as to what we should be doing going forward, uh, in the future from that point forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Gonzalez?
I have to wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Peralta's, um, assertions as well, too. I think the thing that I value the most, coming from a business background, is, again, the continuity. But more over that is the fact that I question in government how much of a role government should be playing in marketing anyway. Because are we that entity? Are we not in ourselves, micromanaging the process by not allowing a professional marketing agency to do this? I mean, McDonald's Corporation doesn't advertise via McDonald's Corporation. They have an outside public relations company that does all that information for them. And they do it damn well. You know, I think the problem is, is that we have our hands in, in, in so many issues as it is right now. Issues that are, are largely of scale, you know, giving planning issues, the airport, um, multiple issues. Yet to add another, uh, marketing division under us, which we have no print agency, no print advertising, no tie-ins, and let alone not knowing the individual that's coming on, whether or not they even have the connections in the marketing world. I mean, it's not an area that, you know, I myself would, would step into because it's not an area that I know. An area that I've studied and continue to study is government and, and what government's role is to the people. And I think this is, this is a huge opportunity for us to really sit back and assess the situation because of the fact that a lot of issues have been brought up equally with how the marketing contract has been driven. And now the direction that we would like to see it driven. I, I see us as the drivers of the bus, not the occupants. And I wanna really emphasize the fact that I don't think we should be in the marketing arena, Mr. Manager. And then I, I do believe we need oversight from a marketing director. But I don't think that we need to be playing the role and solely relying on this individual coming in to take over all marketing aspects. We're just not that entity. Um, so, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would advise that even after the June, um, termination through the fiscal year, that we still put that RFP out and we still continue to, to engage with a professional marketing firm um, because it's money well spent. And, and it's not an area that we belong in by any means.
Councilor?
I think Joni needs to, she's here and she needs to...
Go ahead.
...speak.
Mayor, councilors, town manager, I, I just needed to say a couple of things. I wish I could say it's November and I'm working on March, but I'm not. Cause the way the current month-to-month contract is set up is I cannot commit fiscally any dollars on behalf of the town beyond my contract, which right now is through December thirty-first. For me, this month-to-month isn't working. I've presented a plan, I presented a plan July first in the beginning of the fiscal year. I've presented plans at every LTAB meeting I've been to. I've presented plans at every marketing committee, meeting I've been to. There's no plan. There's no oversight. I have nobody I'm reporting to. This is incredibly frustrating for me. And it's not the way I work in marketing, ever. So if we're going to move forward, and it's an if on both sides here, things have to change. I need to be, I need to have people that I can report to. I need to have a committee I can work with. I need to have communication and not be out here by myself. I need to be given a budget, and that's the budget, and a plan. And I can't wait till the new marketing person starts, so we can start that. But right now, there isn't anything that has been bought beyond December thirty-first except for one ad in the Santa Fe Visitors Guide and one radio buy. Because I don't have a contract beyond December thirty-first and I'm not gonna commit my company's resources and then come back and say, sorry, you don't have a contract, we're not paying your bill. So it's not happening the way that you're saying, Councilor Hahn, I wish it was. So I just wanted you to be aware of, the way the current situation is, I cannot commit beyond what I'm contracted for.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor?
Joni, I guess my question is, and, and a lot of this fallout for me has to lie within the direction of management. Where is the disconnect? I mean, I, if you're saying there's no oversight, no reporting, I'm not getting anything from anybody.
Okay, I'll be frank. Mr. Bellis does not return my phone calls. His voicemail on his cell phone is always full. I text, I email, I have reams of paper if anybody wants to see of all the communications. When he talks about the radio buy, I let him know two weeks before that there was gonna be a radio sale in Albuquerque and I needed to know if we could commit to it in March, cause right now I don't have a contract beyond December thirty-first. He did not respond, he did not respond, he did not respond. I wrote to Chris Smith, who's the president of the, of the, the chairman of the LTAB board, and Lori Moreau, who's the chair of the marketing committee, and I said, okay, we have a great radio opportunity. It's gonna pass us by, cause I can't get a commitment and I don't have a contract. Then I got a commitment. At this point, I don't know what happens if my contract's terminated, who pays that bill? Cause right now, it's a contract between Griffin and Associates and Cumulus Radio. But that's the disconnect. We have an LTAB marketing committee that has no power. They asked me to come on Wednesday and present my plan, which I did, with budgets. We thought we were gonna vote on it. Nothing ever happened. Then I opened the Taos News Thursday morning to find out I'm being terminated. So, you know, am I moving forward or am I not? And this is not about Griffin and Associates. I know it is, cause I'm sitting here and I'm Griffin and Associates, but it's really about the future of the town of Taos. And what I look at is every major brand markets. You turn on the TV on any given day, Apple's advertising, McDonald's is advertising, Coke is advertising. Taos is not bigger than any of those brands. We need to be advertising. We need to keep the momentum going. Why do I think Lodger's tax is down? Because we're in a giant holding pattern. Everything has stopped and we're, I'm scrambling, I can't market month-to-month. I have not one client, I've been doing this for thirty-five years. Not one client has me on a month-to-month contract. You can't market without a plan and we don't have a plan. I mean, I have presented plans, they have not been approved. So my hands are tied. And, you know, if I'm not the right person, look, I am willing to resign. And I went up to Rick at the end of the meeting Wednesday and said, look, if this is about me resigning, I am happy to step down. I love this community, I've poured my heart and soul into it for seven years. I give you about ten thousand dollars of free time every single month. But if you don't want me, I don't have to be here. There are plenty of other people who can do what I do, but let's just move on and stop this whole game. Either we're going forward or we're not. And if you don't want me, I am happy to step away. And I will be gracious and I will pass over all the files to the new marketing director and I'll help you hire a new person. But I can't keep going on like this.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor?
And Mr. Bellis, what is the reason for the disconnect?
I, I don't believe there is a disconnect. I believe it's the same problem we have in interpreting the statistics, whether we're up or down. Which is, you're not on a monthly contract, I approve you on a quarterly, right?
You've approved me through December thirty-first, twenty fifteen. I got, I sent, started sending you emails, which I'm happy to provide to the council in October, saying, November is right around the corner. Am I being renewed for the next quarter? No answer.
And I sent you an email that said I wanted a marketing plan for how we're gonna spend that money.
Which I presented.
We all agreed we would bring it to the marketing committee.
Which I did.
Which we did. And as long as they're happy with it, they recommended that we go forward with the next six months or quarter, depending, okay?
There was no discussion of that. And then the next day in the paper says that you want to terminate the contract.
I can't...
So you, there was no vote at that meeting. It just kind of, I presented and it just kinda fell flat.
And did I not immediately send you and Lori an email saying that I never said that?
On Friday at four, four fifty-nine, yeah.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I guess for me, the, the whole battle between me sitting in this seat, Joni sitting in that seat, is that, Rick, this isn't the first time or the first entity that's addressed such an issue. And I've experienced it as a counselor and, and I, I, you know, I hate to air dirty laundry, but, you know, this council has committed to being open and transparent across the board. And I think it's only fair to disseminate the information that is coming across. And I feel Joni's frustrations because they're not just coming from Joni, they're coming from multiple entities. And while I know communication has gotten better, communication is nowhere near where it needs to be. And, and the fear I have with this is that now I have a vendor that is really up in the air as to whether or not she wants to be engaged in an organization. I don't want that sentiment line out with other vendors that are looking at us because I think the town of Taos has built a damn good reputation on being the leader. And, and I have to be honest, Mr. Mayor, that this organization is slipping to the fact that the, the organization you're about to leave is now stepping to the forefront to become that lead organization. And yet, we're the, we're the entity that allocates the, the big dollars. You know, the, the spirit of collaboration seems to be either nonexistent or very, very much in the, in the bare background because, again, we're duplicating efforts, we're duplicating even our, our constituency bases' efforts because the county is trying to run their own Lodging Tax Association, we're trying to run our own. And yet, we're spinning our wheels and one's going forward, one's going backwards, and half the time, we never meet in the middle. So I think it's, it's only fair, I mean, from a business standpoint, that, you know, Mr. Mayor, whatever quarrel the, the manager's office or the mayor's office has with the current marketing, uh, division, it just needs to stop. Because the people that are, that are, are feeling the, the pain and the pressures is the individuals that are sitting in this audience, or they wouldn't be here. I mean, I personally don't take time out of meetings to, to, you know, out of my busy schedule to go to a meeting unless it really, really, absolutely concerns me. And these are, these are busy business individuals that are choosing to spend their time with us this afternoon. So, Mr. Bellis, I, I mean, I don't know how else to put it, but the, but the communication has to get better. It, it needs to. I, I mean, and to this point, serving in this office now for three years, I have never felt so left out of the loop of everything. So, Mr. Mayor, I task that upon you because he is your appointment.
So, Councilor Gonzalez, if we're to go forward and I'm gonna remain the contractor, my request is that there's clear communication as to who I'm, who am I reporting to? Am I reporting to the LTAB marketing committee? Are they empowered to move forward with the budget, approve ads? Or does everything need to continue going through Mr. Bellis's office? And if it is gonna be through Mr. Bellis, then can we set up a regular? And we've requested this, Adriana, who works for me here, has requested to have a standing meeting every Tuesday at ten so she can come in with what's pressing. But she couldn't even get a meeting to have that meeting, to set up a meeting. Somehow, we have to have, there's gotta be, I, I can't do this in a vacuum and watch the numbers go down and then hear my name tarnished up here when my hands are tied.
Joni, I, I would ask this question, does it need to be on a weekly basis?
Bi-weekly minimum, preferably weekly.
So here's what I would offer, Mr. Mayor, is that, I mean, up to this point, because I feel there is a disconnect between the, the manager's office and yourself, that you maybe report directly to this council. And I hate being the micromanager or the, or the filler in between. But I think it's the only way that we're gonna have the true oversight that's needed within that. I just don't want a, a bickering scheme that you call them out in front of the council and, and, and vice versa that, you know, it causes detriment from here on out. I mean, I need to, my bottom line is, is whether or not you are the right individual or Griffin's not the right individual. I think at this point, it's really just making sure that we're intact for this next coming, at least half-year. Um, so if at the very least, Mr. Mayor, I'd like a standing, open invitation for Griffin to present to the, to the mayor and council uh, at our regular bi-weekly meetings. And, I mean, we'll be that entity until then, but if, if...
And I don't know that you wanna be that detailed, looking at budgets and ads.
Well, but the, but the difference is...
And there is an LTAB marketing committee.
You can send it to us because we get, I mean, I get, you know, inquiries daily. I'll call Marietta. You know, being the mayor pro temp, I, I now see the checks almost every other day coming out of the finance director's office. So for me, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's, it's shown enough concern that it needs to be there.
I think what would make more sense would be LTAB, which is the Lodger's. There's a marketing committee. Hopefully, you will have a new marketing director on board within a month, who can, who can then work with those two entities. And those are people who are committed and it's their money that's going in to fund this. Rather than tie up the council, I, I mean, I appreciate the offer, but I don't know that you really wanna sit here and be editing headlines with me.
You know, the, 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 the end of the, at the end of the day, the buck's gonna stop with us. And whether or not we've done our due diligence to report that or, or allocate those funds where they need to be. You know, for me, I'd stay completely out of the micromanaging and, and yeah, I don't, I really don't need another forty-five minutes tacked on to another meeting. But, you know, I think it's, it's, you are probably our single biggest expenditure, um, with regards to how we market Taos. And again, you know, Mr. Mayor, I ask that you, it, there's not a lot of time left, but if you can extend that hand back out to the county, that we can play a collaborative, uh, collaborative effort role within this marketing, uh, campaign. I mean, it's crazy that we're spinning our wheels, going in both different directions. We're not getting anything out of it, the people aren't getting anything out of it. And I really, really think that, Joni, you have done a pretty damn good job for Taos. I mean, when you get accolades coming out of Mayor Cos, for example, who just left his post out of Santa Fe and saying, well, whatever you're doing, you're doing it right because you're pulling numbers out of Santa Fe. And, you know, that's, you know, for us, that's, that's, that speaks volumes. You know, so, again, it's appreciated. Mr. Mayor, I really, really think that, um, either this council become more engaged or we empower the LTAB board to kinda help drive some of those decisions and make those decisions at the end of the day, maybe with your oversight as well, too.
And, and, Councilor? Joni, I've given you my number. If this was happening, how, how come I, I've never got a call? I mean, this is the first time I've heard about it.
I understand.
You know, and, and, and let me, let me just go on for a second, okay? You know, when we talk about marketing, what I expect out of my marketer, if somebody was marketing me or marketing my town, I would say, here is our marketing program. Here's what it's gonna cost you. Here's one opportunity, here's another opportunity. How are you gonna market us? And, 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 and maybe, I'm at fault, I, I've never heard either, any of those presentations. How are we being marketed?
And it's been, it's been presented back since July one.
And then I just, the people that continue to, to, uh, I wanna say, the people that continue to email are the people that are on your payroll. You know? And, and, and the people that seem to be doing the work. And as, again, as I went out and I visited our community and I was running to be the mayor, you know, the people are, that, that, again, are working for you are the people that told me, we're doing the work for Joni. How come we're paying somebody else to do the work? You know? And that's where I'm coming from. If, 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 I, if there was a disconnect with Mr. Bellis, I've given you my card, I have not got a call. I mean, if you couldn't get a hold of him, you could get a hold of me. I answer my phone. I mean, if I'm in the middle of the woods, I'm cutting logs, I answer my phone. You can talk to anybody out here, I'll answer my phone, it doesn't matter. I mean, if there's background noise, I'll answer my phone. So again, I, I just, and I'll give you my phone number again.
I, I have your phone number, Mayor.
And I mean, if, if there's a problem...
And if you wanna know why I haven't said anything, I have been very quiet, I have been trying to work this out. Councilor Gonzalez just asked me point-blank what the problem is and I answered it.
Right.
But if you want me to call you from now on, I will.
I mean, I'm, you know, basically, I'm, if, if you're not getting through to him, you should get through to me.
Okay.
And we'll make those contacts. Um, that's why, you know, this is kind of, if we need... That's why, you know, this kind of, if we need to sit down, everybody in the room that's involved with the advertising and get this aired out, that's what we need to do.
Okay.
Give us what you're going to advertise, how you're going to advertise us.
I brought the plans for you. It's the same plan I presented on Wednesday, but...
You don't have to give it to me now.
I have it.
We can set this up and we can move forward.
I brought copies for everybody.
I think Counselor Gonzalez is, we need to, again, that informational item, that transparency item, that opportunity for us to work together is great, so I think we can move forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I could real quick, with regards to the emails, I'm seeing emails from community members, lodgers themselves. I mean, unless they're on your payroll, Joni.
There's one person on my payroll, which is Adriana Blake. That's the only person who's on my payroll.
They haven't received anything from Adriana.
She had to go pick up her child unless she came back.
They haven't received anything from Adriana.
So I don't have any other people on my payroll from Taos.
Mr. Mayor, so I think a big part of it is what comes through the email, and that's kind of what I look for, for validity before I open my mouth, is not to listen to the hearsay, but to actually hear the people that are engaged and actively involved on a daily basis. And that's really who, I mean, I lay concerns aside with regards to individuals that, you know, are either known supporters or, you know, whatever the case may be. But when you're getting from all, you know, walks and all realms, people that aren't even associated with lodging, that's where I take offense and I have big issues with.
Counselor, Countu.
I think it's really crucial that you do go to the lodgers' taxes, especially because it is a new lodgers' tax board and we all want to be abreast to what's going on. And I think that if we were to get a new marketer and there's no transition period, you know, it's going to be an absolute mess down the road.
I agree.
You know, we need to have open communication and constant back and forth reporting. It's just crucial, crucial. And I'd like to see what you have.
This is the plan that was presented on Wednesday.
Thank you. And I got one, Joni, thank you.
Another one, do you want it?
I've got one. Hasn't changed.
It hasn't changed since Wednesday, no.
You know, while you're perusing that, since I listened to the presentation and have a copy of it, when it comes to communication, it is a two-way street. And what's really helped me a lot, Councilman Gonzalez and Councilwoman Cantu, is setting up a weekly meeting with Mr. Bellis and the attorney to go over pertinent issues. And we never miss those meetings. It's just a standing, once-a-week thing. The other thing that is really helpful is to define the urgency of your message to the manager, the mayor, or to each other. So if I'm just passing on information and I'm not looking for a response or a timely response, there's no qualifier. But if it is of an urgent nature, that implies a response within 24 hours. And if I qualify it further in the notes column to the addressee emergency, that means an immediate response. That means I'm probably out there with French looking at a sewer, "Just wanted to wake you up, French. Go back to sleep." It's of an emergency. So, communication is a two-way street. We don't have mind readers up here, and you've really got to lay down your boundaries. I would offer the same suggestion to Joni and LTAB people. I know I have a policy of picking up the phone and answering all emails and phone calls within 24 hours, but it sure helps me if the citizen or the concerned business owner or whomever labels their issue as emergent, urgent, or FYI. So, communication is a two-way street.
Fritz, I think I have to disagree on that note in that these people elected me to hear their voice, so I don't call for my health. I call because I have a concern. I shouldn't have to list it as urgent. And I think that's the message, then, you've heard this message from me before. Counselor Gonzalez calls, Counselor Gonzalez gets a call returned back, right? I mean, you said it yourself. That's what I expect. And to this date, it still hasn't, it hasn't taken place. And again, Fritz, I'm not one to air out dirty laundry, but, you know, I'm young enough that I still have a career running for me. I don't know where you sit within yours, but, again, my thing is, is that when I call my town manager, who is at the will of this council and this mayor, I expect a callback. And that's the bottom line. Never worked in an organization where that doesn't happen. If my employees call me or I call them, I expect a callback, just like my boss does the same of me. So I don't need to mark urgency. I get there's a lot on his plate, but at the same point, there's only five of us. And if any one of those five call, I expect some type of priority because these are the individuals that put me out there. Again, I'm not calling for my health.
So we have, on the agenda, we have, let's see, it's under marketing contract, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the renewal or extension. What is the wish into the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. May we continue the contract through June 31st, 2015?
June 30th.
June 30th. Sorry, I had an extra day, but maybe it'll help.
Let's take that extra day.
Okay. And that, we, well, we'll find out in a few minutes what we're at with the marketing director and...
So...
But till then, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to leave it to those organizations that we have looked at to assist in creating a marketing and continuing the marketing plan going forward.
Second.
So we have a second discussion. Marietta, I want to turn to you. So who scrutinizes the bills as they come in, then? I mean, so that, you know, that we're going to stay within that amount that has been allocated and, you know, I know that we don't want any out-of-findings and it was alluded to a little bit about that and just...
Currently, they go through the executive department. Fran Salas goes through everything. She doesn't have something, she sends it to Joni, they get it back to her. I review it one more last time. This is one bill from, this was from May. I didn't bring the current ones, but this one was from May. So there's a lot of backup information in it. So it is a contract basis. If it's a reimbursable, we ask for canceled checks, we ask for invoices, we ask for whatever they have. So really...
And it is a reimbursable contract, so I pay the bills on behalf of the town of Taos and then submit the backup documentation.
Yeah, I know that.
You know, so the plan is whoever agrees with the plan or the campaign or whatever it is, and they just provide all the backup. They do have a fee, PR, their account fee, it's pretty standard every month. I think it runs like about $11,000 just, but they then do in-kind services for those fees, too. So it's checked several times and we pay it as soon as we get review of it. But there's a lot of discrepancy sometimes, so we clear that up. They send it us in. And just for the information on the contract, I don't know if, I know I didn't get it out to you, but we're into the second quarter. The balance would be the $192,488 roughly, to be $345 for the fiscal year. I know we received a $40,000 grant, marketing grant, that we, if that's going to be part of this, we might as well throw that in or let you all know about it so we don't come back to the council and have to amend a contract again. And I don't know what the campaign is for that marketing co-op grant, but it is $40,000 and they match it with the current contract that we have for $345, if that's what the council wishes to do.
I just have a question because my contract's for $385 and you just said $345.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I just missed it by $40,000.
Okay. Otherwise, I was going to say the plan is wrong, otherwise, if it's really $345.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
It's $385 and...
And then the tourism department grant.
And the tourism department grant, which is $40,000. I mean, not to throw any more at you guys, but that's what it is.
And that is for New Mexico True.
And I noticed a lot of the same pictures for New Mexico True is now under Taos, hard to define, impossible for it to get.
Those were some ads that we ran in the summer, so they're just examples.
Okay.
Right now, all that we're running is New Mexico True ads.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I just asked if you, as long as you're going to extend the contract, if you could clarify while the contractor is here, the issue of the fixed fee versus the percentages? Because I'm presuming I won't be reviewing that contract.
So can I talk about that for a minute? So, standard industry practice, when an advertising agency does a media buy, they get a 15% discount. So I'm going to use round numbers. I'm going to use $1,000 just because I can do this in my head easily, okay? So if I bought a $1,000 radio campaign for $1,000, they would charge the ad agency $850. We bill the client $1,000, and that's how we make our money, is that 15% spread. If you were a normal client, not a government agency, I would just bill you the straight $1,000. But because it's the town of Taos and it's a reimbursement contract, I give you my bill for $850, you see my canceled check or my credit card receipt, and then I mark that up by 1.1764%, which is 15%. That comes out to $1,000. And that's the difference that Rick is talking about, and it's always 1.1764%. It doesn't change. And that's the difference between the agency fee and what the media charges. So, Mayor Barone, if you were to call on behalf of the sawmill and buy a $1,000 radio campaign, the radio station would charge you $1,000. Those exact same spots, if Griffin and Associates buys it, costs $850.
So on top of that, we pay you an additional fee?
There's a commission that's paid. It's typically the media commission, yes. And that's always, that's standard agency practice.
So, okay, so let me just get, so if we bought an ad from you, let's just say you were selling us an ad in a magazine, and four-page ad...
Let's just call it, let's just use round numbers. Let's say it's $1,000.
Let's say it's $1,000.
Right.
So now, that ad, you can then turn around and sell other ads to other people under that same...
So that same ad, so let's just pretend I'm the Santa Fe New Mexican. And you call the Santa Fe New Mexican and we say, "We want to buy a full-page ad," and the ad costs $1,000. So they bill you $1,000. That same $1,000 ad, they bill Griffin and Associates $850. They give us a discounted rate.
I understand that, but let's just say, I've seen a couple of your ads, and in those ads, there's businesses within the ad. Who pays for those business ads within our ad?
I don't sell ads that have businesses in your ads.
It's the TOS.
That was what?
The co-op ads, a lot of the time, like the lodgers' association, but those aren't done.
So they're paid?
Those aren't ads that I'm doing. That's from Market Taos. I don't sell ads to businesses.
Okay, I still, I'll ask the question a different way later. Counselor Brought.
I guess the question the mayor was asking a minute ago was, do we pay you a set fee for your contract and then a commission on top of that based upon placement? So the total amount that we pay you then is how much?
There is an account management fee, which is 38-something.
Well, I understood in the contract that we paid you, Griffin and Associates, $75,000 a year.
No, and that's not in the contract. There is an agency fee, and then we charge a PR fee, and we charge a fee for the electronic newsletter and a fee for graphic design. And then we get paid our commission in lieu of charging for media buying. But I can charge it as media buying. I mean, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other.
That's on an average, probably $11,000, $12,000 a month, so $132,000 a year, if you take 11 months, just for those things that she described.
So how much has gone to Griffin?
I don't have the exact figure. I'm just looking at this one, and I looked at some of the invoices that I saw, and it's probably roughly about $11,000 a month.
I think it's a little bit less than that, but...
Or less than, around that.
So it's kind of a perk, huh?
What's a perk?
If you buy radio ads, let's say for $850, but they charge, you charge us $1,000, you get the commission. The difference?
Media give ad agencies discounts because when a media agency, let's just say Cumulus Radio, does business with Griffin and Associates, they get 30 clients instead of having to deal with 30 different clients.
Right, so you get the discount...
Right.
For $850 and bill us $1,000...
Right.
Because of your agency. So, well, that's just sort of the way I'm taking it, that, you know, it's just sort of commission.
Well, it's a commission. We don't charge you for all the time that we spend researching media and placing the media and following up on the media. I mean, we can bill it hourly or we can bill it commission. We've always done it commission. If you'd prefer to bill it hourly, we can do it hourly.
Have to put paper to pan, so, pen and paper.
I'm just going back over my recollection and the discussions we had about your contract in the budget process. And I believe that, and I could be totally wrong, but I believe my recollection is, is that the way the contract was presented to us is that $75,000 went to Griffin and Associates to run our buys, and then the rest of the budget went to actual buys.
I wasn't in the budget meeting, so if that's the case, that was never presented to me that way. And that's not what's in the contract.
So that was when I started off earlier and talked about what the contract was, is that's what my understanding was when it was presented to us. And I didn't go down line by line to look at the exact figures in there, but that's the way it was presented, that $400,000 contract. And I'm just making a round number.
Okay.
That of the $400,000, $75,000 would go to Griffin and $325,000 would go to buys. My assumption was in that $75,000 was your discounts or your media purchases.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So from what I'm hearing now, that it's, we're up at around, for the year, roughly about $100 and some odd thousand is what your company gets. And then the difference of about $280,000 actually is buys.
Yeah.
So Joni, what would prevent you during the month of December contracting out March, in other words, the advertising work, getting those invoices sent in December, forwarding them to the town so that Marietta can pay for March's advertising? Why isn't that being done?
The media invoices are after it's been placed, so they don't pre-bill you for that. So for advertising that's going to run in March, we'll get an invoice March 30th. It would be on the March invoice.
I hear what you're saying. I've never known anyone to reject prepayment.
Well, I think it would be an issue with your auditors because then what if those ads don't run?
But then, you know, we don't want to beat a dead horse here, but what I'm trying to do is maybe get over this bridge of just going month-to-month while we get a marketer in to really develop a solid game plan. I still maintain that it can be done and should be done.
The way we could do it, and I don't know how you would have to legally redo contracts, would be I could have the media bill the town directly as opposed to having it run through my contract. And then that would work. But I wouldn't want to see you prepay media and then for some reason, that media doesn't run as it was supposed to.
But you've got staff to verify that it's been run, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, that's all the data that you've been giving us now every month or quarter.
But if you're asking that I'm going to bill you in December for ads that are going to run in March, but they haven't run yet, what if there's an issue? How do we correct that?
And I'm saying I would think it could be done.
I can't imagine, finance right now is not approving any bill that I don't have massive backup for. I can't imagine they're going to let me pre-bill something that hasn't run.
So, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll call for the question.
Yeah, so that's what I was going to say. So we do have a motion, we do have a second on it. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
No.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Johnny.
I still have a little heartburn that we, the amount of money that we actually get, the bang for our buck, you know, it's your lodger's tax money, if you guys are okay with not, only getting 300, or a percentage of actual ads, it's all right with me.
Mr. Mayor, who are you going to get to do the work if you're not going to have to pay?
Yeah, I mean, so, okay, we'll go ahead and go on to, we have under Citizens Forum, citizens wishing to speak shall have the opportunity to do so for five minutes.
Excuse me, Mayor, councilmembers, we skipped item 8A, and Mary is now present.
Oh, she is present, we tabled that item, and we can put it, we can bring it back on the table if that's the wishes of the council. Okay. You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I move to take a brief recess while the hall clears.
Do we have a second to that?
Second.
We have a motion to take a five-minute break, and a second, call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hi, Mary, good, how are you?
All right.
Councilmember Hahn also brought this up at the.
We have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilor, we'll go on to, we have a motion to bring back, we tabled item number 8A. Do we have a motion, a resolution, 1463, supporting?
I move, we take it off the table, make it an next order of business.
Okay, we have a second to that?
Second.
And a second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
So I guess we'll look to Mrs. Mary Felblum.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilors, and I apologize that I wasn't here earlier, but I went to the wrong place.
Oh.
And you had to find where you were located, so. But my name is Mary Felblum, and I'm the executive director of the Health Security for New Mexicans Campaign, which is the largest coalition in the history of our state. There were close to 150 organizations from around the state that have endorsed what is known as the Health Security Act. In addition, there are 33 cities and counties that have actually passed resolutions in favor of the Health Security Act from Santa Fe to Roswell. Roswell's the more recent one that has done that. We have been working on this legislation, represent, when Counselor Peralta was a state representative, he certainly remembers the first time it was introduced as bill, a bill, and over the years, it's been about 20 years, we've gone out to the community and asked doctors, and hospitals, and business people, you know, what, and many others, you know, if we were to set up our own health plan in New Mexico, what worries you? What concerns you? So, the Health Security Act is actually the result of years of input, and changes each time the bill has been introduced. It will be introduced this session by Senator Howie Morales, and in conjunction with Senator Carlos Cisneros, and Representative Bobby Gonzalez. What the bill would do is enable New Mexico to set up its own health plan for almost all New Mexicans. The military, for instance, would be very complicated from a state perspective to deal with them, and so they are excluded. The federal retirees, for complex legal reasons, are also excluded. There are two groups that can voluntarily join, the tribes, the sovereign nations, and companies that self-insure and come under a federal law called ERISA. States can't regulate them, but they certainly can voluntarily join, and in discussions that we've had, the idea of economies of scale, of a health plan of 1.7 or 8 million people, as opposed to 3,000 or 4,000 or less in a self-insured company, is very appealing. For plan members, there is complete freedom of choice of doctor and hospital, including across state lines, this plan can contract with hospitals, associations around the country, the specialty clinics, and so there is real, no more networks for beneficiaries under this plan. The services offered, that must be calculated, or can be no less than what state employees have, which is a very good package, that includes good mental health, biofeedback, family counseling, and includes chiropractic treatment, acupuncture, it's a very good package. The employers and individuals who wish to buy more can purchase more on the private market. If you think of this as the traditional Medicare, when Medicare was set up, what happened was that there was a supplemental market that grew, and is actually more lucrative for Mutual of Omaha than, than, excuse me, many other products. The plan would be administered by a citizens board, a geographically representative citizens board, so Albuquerque is not dominant, and Santa Fe included, six out of the 15 would come from Albuquerque and Santa Fe, which means nine come from outside those areas. 10 represent consumer and business interests, 5 represent health facility and provider interests. There's no elected officials, no cabinet secretaries that sit on this, and when we were describing this to a group of farmers and ranchers in the northeastern part of the state, they said, "This sounds like a co-op," and that's the model, that this really is. It would be subject to the Open Meetings Act, the Public Records Act, this board can't do anything behind closed doors, and is fully transparent. The, it would be paid for by using existing public dollars that are already going to healthcare like this. There would have to be agreements with Medicaid and Medicare, so people wouldn't lose what they have. And then there would be premiums based on income, and with a cap to it, at the high end, and a minimum below which people wouldn't pay, and employer contributions. In addition, the plan requires that the superintendent of insurance lower the health portions of the premiums in workers' comp and auto insurance, private passenger and commercial automobile. They have large health components to them. If I break my leg in a car accident, and I'm a beneficiary of this plan, and it pays for that broken leg, then I don't have to file, file with my auto insurance company, I don't have to pay double. So it's, there is a lowering of those premiums for, in workers' comp and auto insurance. All of this is to be figured out in what we call, the first year of this bill when passed, the Legislative Finance Committee has to hire the consultants to figure out what this plan would cost, and over time, not just in the first year, how much money, public monies, can be assumed to offset the cost, and then how would the remainder be made up, with premiums and employer contributions, and also how much would workers' comp and auto insurance be reduced? Once that report is completed, it has to be presented for approval to the subsequent legislature. If it's not working, if it doesn't look affordable, there's actually a sunset clause in the bill, and all that, we're doing is asking for a fiscal analysis of this approach. But there have been two studies done in New Mexico, one in 1994, and one in 2007, and both have indicated that if we pool all or most New Mexicans into one old-fashioned health risk pool, there will be stavings of hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars, within a five-to-seven-year period. There have been other states that have done this, from Kentucky, Minnesota, Missouri, California, Oregon, they've all contracted with think tanks to do similar studies, and they have come to similar conclusions. So it is pretty likely that this will be affordable, the question is, what will it look like? What are the specific numbers? And that is the task of the first year. Once that year, if the numbers look good, then, only then, is this board, this commission set up. And it would then be tasked to figure out, and would have two years, to figure out how this is going to work for rural New Mexico, for hospitals, for doctors, for patients. Is this plan going to be perfect? No. So then what are our rights? You know, what are the appeals, the rights of me as a patient, or the rights of a doctor, if we're dissatisfied with something? All of this has to be worked out with public input. This is not to be done, again, behind closed doors, but with public input. And so that by the time we would get our cards, those of us who are beneficiaries, and we go to the physician of our choice, that physician would be paid in a timely fashion. There are a lot of pieces that have to be put in place before that happens. And I think we all know about the disaster that occurred with the website, with the, under the, with the exchange, and so we're very concerned that there would actually be a timeframe that seems reasonable, and the ability of this commission to actually extend the time, should they so need it with a supermajority. So that's basically it, in a nutshell. I would like to say that we have, our support has grown dramatically over the years, and we are a volunteer group, basically, I'm part-time, my northern coordinator's part-time, but we usually, we rely on volunteers, and it has been a real pleasure to get, to learn how this plan can be workable for New Mexico. At this point, there is, and I've read bills in other states, there's nothing like it. It is truly smothered in green and red chili. It is a very homegrown approach that I think is unique, and we had a statewide meeting recently, where there were three legislators who said, you know, "This could become a model for states with small populations, like ours." If you were California, it'd be different, but, you know, with lots and lots of numbers. But we were a poor and rural state with small numbers, and the challenges are dramatic. So with that, I stand for questions.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Mary and I have had a little bit of a discussion, and she understands my concerns and my worries about this program, because I was involved when Max Call first started New Mexico Care back in the 90s, and how that didn't get off the ground because of issues of economics and inviability, and who was in, who was out, or whatever. So I've got just a few questions for you at this point. And one is, if this becomes law, then all private insurance will go away?
No, Counselor Peralta, it shifts the role of private insurance, the way Medicare did. So you'd have private, you would have the supplemental market, in fact, I remember a conversation I had with an Aflac agent, whose eyes just lit up, about this. And in addition, this plan can have third-party payers, in other words, they process the claim. So there are roles for the insurance industry, it changes their role substantially, so they wouldn't be taking the big risk. Several, quite a few years ago, in Las Cruces, I had some meetings with some insurance agents, and their first reaction was, "Oh, this is going to put us out of business." And then one of them said, "Well, we thought that about Medicare, when Medicare was discussed in Congress, and look what happened with the Medicare supplemental market, it really grew and expanded." And so it changes their role, that's what it does, it's not, it's very, so, in essence, we have a system of small pools, small, you know, segmented insurance pools, which is very costly to hospitals and doctors, that have to deal with maybe 100 different policies, different copays, different deductibles, it's enormously costly. And in our state, can we afford something like that?
So, everyone who would hit the criteria of being financially eligible to be in this program would have to be in it. And so the minimum coverage by this plan could be supplemented by another outside insurance company, but you would still have to be paying into this plan somehow.
Correct.
And so all of Medicare, Medicaid, private pay, non-pay, right now would be put into this, and the requirements then, for those who aren't insured, would have to pay some kind of a premium to be in the plan, provided that they fall within that eligible income bracket.
Under.
Otherwise, they would be covered by a Medicare, or not a Medicare, but a Medicaid supplement, that would be in the program, correct?
Under the Affordable Care Act, there's a waiver for state innovation that states can begin to apply for by January 1st, 2017. Vermont, in fact, is going to be the first state to apply for that waiver. When you get that waiver, you get all the Medicaid expansion funds, all the subsidies, all the tax credits under the Affordable Care Act. So all the beneficiaries of the health security plan would be eligible for that. Our uninsured, a large chunk of our uninsured are in fact eligible for Medicaid, and particularly with the Medicaid expansion program. And so that is so beneficial for our state, and so those people don't have to pay, because that they're covered through the agreement with Medicaid.
Except, and go back to the question, or the concern I had earlier, and that is our hospital, it had 45% Medicaid, and if you increase that number, and if the reimbursement to our hospital is based upon that, we can't stay open.
The.
So this is where I'm coming from, in saying that, okay, and you said you can negotiate that with them, but if the negotiation is on those rates, and we continue to have a greater majority of our people falling under the Medicare or Medicaid range of reimbursement in that level, we'll go broke. I mean, that's, we've already proven that in our finances. So we have to find a way that we get more reimbursement from the private payer insurance side than we are. So the reimbursement for our rural hospitals, or any hospitals, has to go up in the Medicaid arena, or we can't survive. And so this is where the concern is, that on the payment side to hospitals, and physicians, and other healthcare providers, if we can't get an increase in that area, we're not going to survive. Physicians are going to leave, everybody's going to leave the state, and we won't have any healthcare. So this is the concern that I have, in not seeing numbers to show that reimbursements are actually going to increase over what we have now, in order for the health system itself to survive, not for people to be in the health system, but the affordability of the health systems, practitioners, in order for them to survive. And this is where I'm saying, I got to see those numbers in order to say that this is a program that I can support. There's no question that we could cut down on how much money people are putting into it, but if it's not enough to take care of the care on the other side, it's for naught. So.
There are two parts, you know, I think, to what your comments, one is, the current hospital system of fees is broken. There's cost shifting that occurs, so if Medicare pays low, then the private pay pays high, and my understanding is workers' comp pays even higher, and the uninsured pay even higher. It's a broken system. People have been commenting on, in fact, I think New Mexico is talking about, you know, how do we make, how do we create a system in which everybody pays the same fee? What kind of transparency we have? What is a real, what does Kleenex really cost in a hospital? You know, it's become, the whole hospital of charging system is just, it is really broken. What this plan says is, let's have this plan negotiate a budget with a hospital, just the way university hospital has a budget, and that is an operating budget. So there's no more specific charges, and so it's really what the real Kleenex costs, what the real, what it costs really to do an operation, for appendix, to take, remove an appendix, it's. remove an appendix. It's, it's the real cost of healthcare, plus some administration overhead. This is, so it doesn't matter who shows up at the door, and what kind of, anymore. It's, if you're, you're, you're a New Mexican, and you're in this plan, the hospital doesn't have to worry about collection. They would collect from the Oklahoma skier, you know, who comes and has an accident in Taoski Valley, then they'd have to have that kind of a collection in, in their, but that's, that's, the, the first part of it, is a different system for, for hospitals, which is, in some of the discussions I've had with hospitals, and particularly rural hospitals, this is a very appealing approach.
So let me expand on my question a little bit. So that takes care of the New Mexico resident who comes to the hospital. What happens to the non-New Mexico resident who comes to the hospital, who has no insurance? The Oklahoma student skier on vacation? The undocumented alien, alien who comes to the hospital for healthcare because they can't go anyplace else? And by law, federal law, we can't turn away anyway, anyone who comes to the emergency room. We have to take them. And I don't see that changing, so that's going to be a given.
Well, the Affordable Care Act, though, requires that everyone have insurance. We're not talking about undocumented, but everyone have insurance. So that student that's skiing in, you know, from Oklahoma, their parents, or they, you know, if he's under 26, their parents will have insurance, or he will, or she will be required
Maybe.
to have insurance.
Maybe. There's a lot of people who weren't signing up, so, and, and the penalties for it are so ridiculously low, it's not driving anybody to insurance.
In the first year, second year they're hired.
Well, but the second year's not even that much. $300, you know, it's nothing. That's a lot cheaper than, than the premiums that are out there. So what I'm trying to get at is now, for example, with our hospital, our write-offs are 10% of our budget. Medicaid is 45% of our budget reimbursement, and this is the lowest pay of any. And then you got 15% that is Medicare, and the difference, then, is insurance pay. And so the question is, unless we bring down, and, and by the way, the, the lines are going so that private insurance pay is actually decreasing on an annual basis, substantially. So cost shifting, our hospital can't cost shift to private pay, because it's not there. And so the effect of what we have is, we have a hospital and medical system that is working on a very, very poor population. And, and because of that, it's making it very difficult for us to stay in business. And my question in this regard, then, is how is this program going to change that? And so I'm looking at the little loopholes that aren't necessarily being discussed, and I realize that, that I'm doing it from, from a perspective of, of being on a hospital board that has gut concerns. So that's why I'm asking the questions, and trying to fill in the blanks, and asking, how do we get these things taken care of, and ensure that we're not just going to shift ourselves out of business?
Well, it's, having talked to quite a few hospitals over the years, and especially rural hospitals, they are intrigued by the idea of, of a negotiated operating budget, where they, so that, you don't have the Medicaid reimbursement problem. You don't have a Medicare, which also pays low, reimbursement problem. You don't have the problem of the uninsured. All, almost all New Mexicans would be automatically insured through this plan, with the exceptions that I, I pointed out earlier. For instance, if I'm military, well, then I'm not in this plan, but I'm covered through the military system. So everybody has coverage. It may not just be through this health plan. And it is, and it's an automatic thing. The, the exchange system, an individual who is uninsured, and who could buy in the private market, but the whole idea of an exchange was to allow a person to shop, compare apples and apples, it's very complicated. Because, you know, do they buy a bronze plan? Do they buy a silver plan? How much of a deductible do they want? It's, it's a whole calculation of risk. I assume I'm going to be healthy this coming year, so maybe it will be, I will pay for the cheapest. But then I'm in a car accident, or something else, I get cancer or something. And healthcare shouldn't be that kind of a risky business. It should be automatic assure, you know, assurance. And with, with hospitals, the current system is so broken, as we all know. Your hospital isn't the only one, you know, to have these, these terrible concerns. And, and, and a, an operating budget is a different paradigm. And the, the purpose of that first year in the Health Security Act is to go through the numbers to see, is there enough money to pay for the services that assumes the state employees, similar to, to the state employees? If there isn't, as I said before, there's a, there's a sunset clause. It's not, if, if the money isn't there to pay for, for this, then end of story. But if it is, then let's move on into figuring out a lot of the details of this plan.
Just one last comment. And this goes to the practitioner. Right now, in New Mexico, many of our practitioners are not making enough money or living. And in order for us to keep them, we're going to have to compete with Texas, and Colorado, and Arizona, and California, everybody else. And so it's very difficult in rural communities to, and Taos is an exception to that, because we're, we're doing pretty good. It's costing a lot of money, but we're doing pretty good. But in many rural communities, they're having a hard time even finding anybody who's interested in practicing there. So in your numbers that you work with, we're going to have to find some way to make the payment to these practitioners competitive with other states, so that we can actually attract more caretakers than, than what we have now. And in the studies that have been done in 2000, in 2007 and '94, was that taken into account? Do you know?
No, it wasn't. But the, the Health Security Act does. The Health Security Act says that this commission can, can offer higher reimbursements for providers in, in rural and underserved areas. This, when I was in Roswell...
But this would have to be across the board, whether you're in a rural or, or an urban area, because you're taking and saying, you know, doctor, specialist, surgeon in Albuquerque, instead of you making $1.5 million a year net, we can only pay you $500,000 a year net. What does that do to them? I'm, I'm just saying, and I'm being very crazy in, in what I'm saying, but this has been part of the problem that I looked at in the past, of some of the things that were going to change how reimbursements were made, and it was going to create a situation where somebody making extremely good money wouldn't make that anymore, and somebody who's making very little money would make more. But it doesn't necessarily solve the issue of making New Mexico a place where you want to practice.
Well, there are two points I want to raise, because the first, the first issue you were talking about was how to attract providers in rural areas. And while you can offer higher reimbursements to providers in rural areas, there are other issues that providers, that doctors, or nurses, or others take into consideration before they move into a community. And that is the school system, what kind of recreation is available, what kinds of, all kinds of issues. And that's where the counties and the cities come in, municipalities come in. And if your budget's being eaten up by rising healthcare costs, you're not going to have the flexibility to do the kinds of investment in events you were talking about, and festivals, and other kinds of things that, that would attract a family, not just one doctor, but a family, to, to a, a community. And so, but the bill allows for higher reimbursement, reimbursement to rural and underserved communities, but it's not the, the sole answer to attracting them. The other thing I want, want to stress is, we're finding, and I was shocked, I was at the Deming, I went down to Deming and spoke to the CEO of the hospital, and he wanted me to talk to his staff. Well, I'd been to Deming before, and I'd met with independent physicians. And all of a sudden, now they were on staff for the hospital. And that is a growing tendency in, in our state, is to see doctors are so fed up with, with the complexity of the private insurance system, the craziness, the calls, the, dealing with the staff, that, that is, the high turnover, because it's so frustrating. The claims aren't written in right, and the, the delays in payments. So they, they're, they're high, they're working for the VA, they're working for Presbyterian, they're, they're just here. I suspect they're doctors working for St. Christopher's, the way they are in Las Cruces, and in
And they are.
Silver City, and elsewhere. And a friend of mine is the head of Endocrinology Department in New York, New York Hospital. And he's, he said, you know, you've been working on this bill for years, Mary. Can I read it? So I sent him, it was a couple of years ago, that version of the bill. And he called me up, and he said, I'm moving to New Mexico. I am so fed up with this current system. What you're offering is, is, is I can begin to practice medicine again. I don't have to deal with this, this headaches. And of course, providers are also on the board. They're represented on this commission. So we think it's going to be an attraction for, for providers. And if monies are freed up in the general fund, in the cities, and in county commissions, so it's not eaten up by healthcare costs, and you, you have a lower workers' comp, and you have trucks, and cars, and lower automobile insurance, that means you can, you're going to have some money to invest in, in things that will make your community very attractive, I think, to people. And it was obvious from the conversation that I heard this afternoon with you all, that you're very, very concerned about the, you know, the events and festivals to make Taos, and as, as a source of revenue, you know, for, for the city, but also a very attractive place for people to, to want to be in. So, you know, the current paradigm we're under is, is so broken. And the Affordable Care Act opens the door, I think, to other paradigms. And that's what's so exciting about the waiver for state innovation. And the, the nice, what I like about, what was not in New Mexico Care, but what I like about the current bill, is that there's a process involved. It says, this isn't, isn't instantaneous. Let's just take a look at the numbers. Do we feel comfortable with the numbers? If we don't, okay, let's not talk about this paradigm anymore. If we do, and there's a lot of evidence, as I said before, that this is a very workable model, then we've got to roll up our sleeves and deal with the complexity of what kind of plan this would look like. I like to cook, so I talk about the, the bill as a recipe, a great recipe, and we're going to be the cooks. And we can burn this, or we can make this into something incredible and delicious for us. And, and the process that's laid out in the bill allows for a lot of public input and creativity. And having traveled around the state a lot, we have a lot of wonderful, creative, smart people, that I think could really do something very unique for, for our state. And that's why I think we've, we've gotten support at the local level from very, very disparate types of individuals. And, you know, you've got the city of Santa Fe and city of Roswell to endorse something that, you know, I am very proud of that.
Thank you.
Counselor Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for your presentation. So we have no set of reimbursement rates. It's a little premature.
Consulman Peralta, and perhaps...
Your mic, please.
I just faded it.
Oh.
You stepped on your cord.
No, it's too far out there. There we go. Impacts with indigent fund, because that might, if it's still in effect by 2017, take care of the undocumented. True? No, no? What does that word indigent mean, then?
It means that you're a citizen.
Does it, does it, even with the federal requirements, that we treat everybody, I thought those folks could qualify for indigent.
They do in Los Cruces.
Not right now, they can't.
Donaana, they do. In Donaana County, they do.
I wonder how they get that.
That I can't tell.
Separate fund.
Yeah. And then my third question was, what is the name, Fred, that state, the annual state reimbursement to hospitals?
So, Community Provider Fund? Is that what you're thinking of, the federal?
Well, that's gone.
I know, I know.
It's a...
Would that be impacted? That, we just got the 5.1, and we're going to get 2.1?
All of that would be rolled into the program she's talking about.
All of it?
All of the federal funding that comes to the state in New Mexico now would be put into that program, whether it's under Medicaid, or subsidies for whatever, including in that would be your Medicare would come into that.
Right. Well, it's just, yeah. Okay. And then, just a heads up, have you gotten in touch with Dr. Mike Kaufman and Jim Peterson over at Holy Cross?
Dr. Mike Kaufman, I've met several times in the past, but not recently. And Jim Peterson, I'm not a, I don't know him.
He is the PHO Director over at Holy Cross Physicians Health Organization,
Okay.
which also includes mental health providers. I would strongly encourage you to reach out to them.
Okay.
Because they are also kind of talking about a self-insured plan for the county.
Mm-hmm.
And so perhaps there may be the pruning of some really good ideas that could help to not only attain your goals, but theirs as well. And truthfully, one of our goals here in this county is to keep our medical bucks here in the county.
Of course.
Not in Santa Fe, or Albuquerque. It's about $10 million a year. So that's a hefty, hefty sum that could really help stabilize our little hospital. So would you mind reaching out to Mike? 758-2224.
Oops. Okay. I need to take that down some.
Yes, Mike Kaufman.
Yeah.
Just say, hey, you know, we heard that you're working on some kind of insurance thing.
I'd heard that.
PHO, what's up? I think it might be really helpful.
Okay. Thanks.
Is that 758-22?
24. 2224.
And then, there's also Dr. Peterson, you said?
He works with Jim.
Okay.
Or Jim Peterson at Holy Cross Hospital. What's the number, Fred? 758-8883. Holy Cross Hospital, 758-8883, PHO, Jim Peterson. They need to be aware of this, so that we don't have, because they may be thinking about launching just about the same time you are.
They're thinking like 2017, 2018?
Maybe. Have they talked to you about that, Fred?
I don't think it's allowable in the Affordable Care Act.
Okay.
Under the, prior to that, you could do that sort of thing. But, in fact, we're, we're even looking at, we used to have a self-insurance fund for the hospital employees, and we got away from that because we couldn't afford it. The, the problem you have is, unless you have some sort of controls, the fund gets overused. And so what was happening is, they were covering 100% of every thing that a person wanted to do. And so it just got too expensive, so they went to Blue Cloud, Blue Shield, which has deductibles, brought the cost down.
Well, it's also the problem of small pools. You know, the smaller the pool, the more costly it is, and, and small employers painfully know this. If they bought, if they're able to get insurance for three employees, one gets sick, then up goes the premium. And, but, but it, it, we have a very segmented and small pool market, and that is a fundamental flaw in what we're, we're facing today.
Counsel, any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Sure, please, come on up front, and, and if you, just so we can hear you.
I would, yeah.
She's our northern coordinator.
Yes, got to meet with her. It was great.
Yeah, I'm from, I'm from Ora, and been a community activist for many, many years. But we also need to take into consideration telemedicine in the future, I think, for rural communities is going to be very, very critical, because I know in some areas, rural areas, they're already really utilizing telecommunicate, telemedicine, you know, using the specialists that we don't necessarily have in our communities. And I think that, that will be another avenue that eventually, I hope that we can incorporate very strongly into this plan, because that's really what's going to benefit our rural communities. very strongly into this plan, because that's really what's gonna benefit our rural communities and keep costs down. Um, you know, it's hard to attract people to our communities because we don't have good schools, we don't have a lot of, um, the socialist, socialization avenues that people like doctors want, or access to universities and stuff. So I think that just thinking about those things, I think, are important in making your decisions, whether you support this initiative or not, so.
Thank you. And I think Anita's reminding me of something. My premium goes to a private insurance company out of state, and they invest in it. This, with this health plan, our premiums and employer contributions go into a dedicated fund. And we're talking about billions of dollars, even at 1% interest is plenty to have a reserve fund, but also for communities that can't afford, you know, good clinics or quality medicine, that, that there can be an investment. And it's not coming from the general fund. It's gonna come from this fund to help build the kind of infrastructure. Um, I, the, in Portales, their hospital can't, um, a woman has to go have a baby in Clovis. Their, their hospital will not, doesn't have an obstetrics department anymore, it's too costly. Well, that's, you know, hos, what should a hospital, rural hospital be good at? They're not going to be MD Andersons, but they should be good and offer quality services so that people, um, you know, have, have, have access to good healthcare. And, you know, in addition, there, there's not only telemedicine, but Kentucky has like roving chemotherapy units. Um, there's lots of things, because when people are sick, they, you know, to move, to go to Albuquerque from Taos, not have your loved ones with you is, is, is very hard. And so how, you know, it, this, this plan gives us the possibility, I think, to create a, a system which is really going to help rural communities and that, and, and the board, the majority of the board is rural, comes from rural areas. As I said before, there are 15 board members, and six of the 15 come from Albuquerque and Santa Fe. That means nine come from outside that area. So these interests are gonna be strongly reflected in the kind of plan that's created after, you know, a lot of public input.
And I also understand that, um, I, I don't know if anybody knows any different, but I understand the indigent funds will eventually go away to smaller communities. They would be directly directed to the larger hospitals in New Mexico. Does anybody else know anything about that?
I never heard that.
Yeah, but, um, I know that in, in, in Mora, uh, we will no longer have the indigent funds available. They will be going to the hospitals, to the larger hospitals in New Mexico, like UNM and, and Presbyterian or Lovelace or whatever.
I don't believe that's true. That, that's not true. There is, what basically happened, and, you wanna?
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'll, I'll yield to you.
The indigent funds are collected by the counties-
Right.
-under an eighth, two eighths, three eighths gross receipt tax. That money is required to go into indigent care by law. What happened this last year is, and what was happening, let me go back. What was happening before is that indigent fund was given, not given to the state, but pledged to the state to get reimbursement funds from the feds, three to one.
Okay.
That program by the feds and by the state changed to where they created a pool, and they required the counties to put 1/12 of their indigent fund monies to go into that pool to make reimbursement to the feds for the maximum amount of money that the feds were willing to give the state of New Mexico. However, that 1/12 was not sufficient to, to match the requirement. So the legislature put in $10 million, and the University of New Mexico Hospital put in $16 million to make up the match of 46, $43 million against, that brought in $153 million from the feds. The money that the University of New Mexico Hospital put in was only paper, was not actual money. So, but in all that case, that money that came in was required to be used for indigent care. It's just under a different program. And that's by state law. So the money is not gonna go to the large hospitals and away from the rural hospitals. And in fact, under the current mathematics, the large hospitals don't get any.
Okay.
And they don't put any money into it, so they don't get any. And the smaller hospitals, depending upon their budgets and their costs to their community for reimbursement, not for reimbursement, for unpaid, then is split up. And right now, Taos gets the lion's share percentage-wise of, of that money. So depending upon how the Health and Human Services Department and the governor feel, that mathematics could change from year to year.
Yep.
But it, it's, it's not gonna go away from the local.
Okay.
You'd never get the legislature to go wrong with that.
Yeah, thank you for correcting that, because, um, I, I just, I listened to our presentation at the, to the county commission, and obviously it was not correct.
And there is, and there is another tax that within the county, and I don't know if that was the same in Mora County, but in Taos County, there was an additional tax that was being collected, but it was designated for indigent fund, but the indigent fund pool was so big already that they couldn't spend it all, so they, um, it was repealed to change the structure on how it could be spent. And that's what happened in Taos County just recently during the new election. It was repealed so that it could be then reallocated, because there was enough money in the indigent fund that they can't spend all that indigent fund money, so.
You can send it to Mora.
And in the Health Security Act, there's language that says the counties are going to have to figure out how, what, you know, how, what, how the indigent fund should be used under this system. So it's definitely county control.
Consulwoman?
Fritz and Fred, thank you for your, your information and your knowledge. This isn't new to me. I, I want, I've never heard the term "telemedicine." What, what is that?
Um, it's, well, you can call in to like the larger hospitals and, and, you know, like Skype, you can have a specialist on the other end and say, you go to a clinic and you have something, uh, that they don't, uh, they don't provide any services for. They can call through this telemedicine, and a specialist can guide him through any procedure.
Oh, that sounds really interesting.
Yeah.
So in reading this, I, I was just, is, is this like a, an expansion, a different branch though on Obamacare? Are they-
Oh, Obamacare allows for what's called a waiver for state innovation. To deal with the uninsured, Obamacare has set up that all states are supposed to have exchanges through which the uninsured, who do not have insurance through public or private systems, have to purchase health insurance. So this isn't an expansion of it, because that's buying health insurance. This one is saying, "Let's self-insure our, you know, most of the people in our state," and shift the role of private insurance. So people who are insured by this plan aren't figuring out how to buy a bronze or a silver or what kind of a deductible or copay. It's, it's, it's an automatic system, sort of like what they have in Japan and, and European countries. But this is, this one's smothered in green and red trilly, because we have different laws and different experiences. That's, that's the difference. But it's an automatic system where, and it's not, you don't have to calculate. You can buy more insurance on the private market, should you so choose, or your employer choose, but you would be automatically, as a resident of New Mexico, automatically insured. And so the military are excluded. This would be very complicated for our state to take that, that over.
Yeah.
And the tribes as sovereign nations can decide to, whether they want to join this. We just, we met with Taos Pueblo today, for instance, and we've talked to the Pueblos and the tribes about language, so that they can decide whether to join this plan. And, um, and then the self-insured, the large companies that self-insure, like Intel, can decide to join. We think they will, because of the economies of scale. They're hurting with rising healthcare costs. And the, the thought, and they would also, I think, the attraction of work, lowers workers' comp and, and commercial automobile insurance would be very appealing to those large companies. I've, in discussions I've had with them.
Yeah.
And the Mathematica study, in fact, assumes that most of them would join.
Yeah, that'd be good for the urban Indian population-
Absolutely.
-who aren't living on the reservation.
Very much so.
Yeah. So people with pre-existing conditions-
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. Old, young, healthy, not so healthy. And that's the idea. Insurance, uh, in fact, Blue Cross Blue Shield was originally set up with a community rating system. It should, you have the same rate regardless of your, your age and gender and health status. And that's what this is about. This is like, um, young, old, healthy, not so healthy, all in it together. You share the risk. I pay a premium, knowing you'll need it. You pay a premium, knowing I'll need it. And, and when you have numbers, large numbers, then that, the risk is, is, is more, it's, it's, it's better, much better. The, the costs are better. It's why large companies pay smaller premiums than the small employers. And, and it's, it's much more calculated, you know, how many cancer patients you would have over a large population, you know, how many heart attacks. It's just much, it's just much more financially calculable.
Thank you.
And Counselor, if you'd like, um, in the jail, at the county jail, that they use telemedicine. So it's pretty interesting, so if you ever, if you can get a tour there, they can show you how it all works. It's pretty neat.
There's places that have dial-a-doctor, where you individually can dial a doctor if you're having some symptoms. And they, and you dial a doctor and he'll answer your call.
And ask for your credit card?
Yeah. Well, yeah, now there's, some companies are sending your x-rays over to India. I mean, it's really kinda scary.
Mayor, that's the, that's the whole, one of the big pushes behind the broadband project, because it creates the bandwidth necessary to communicate across the spectrum.
Mm-hmm.
And really what it is, is enabling, for example, our, our Children's Youth and Family Clinic, where so many families are unable to make the trip to Albuquerque, or in times of almost immediate need to see a specialist, it opens up the opportunity for them to be able to, to do that.
Yes.
I had an uncle that spent about a month and a half in the hospital this, this past year with pneumonia, and his doctor daily was in Kansas City, that they'd will a little card in, and he communicated with him via, via telemedicine. So I think it's the wave of the future. It's gonna go that way.
Oh, yeah.
Plus it keeps costs down, because you're not paying the specialist-
Exactly.
-to be physically there.
Mm-hmm.
So, well, not to the tune that you would if you were making the trip to Kansas City to see him.
Yeah.
Houston.
So Counsel, any, any further comments? Any, if not, uh, what is the wish and wishes of the counsel? It's on the, it is Resolution 1463, Supporting Health Security Act.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead, and I'd like to move to approve the Resolution 14-63, Supporting the Health Security Act.
Second.
Do we have a second to it? And we have a second to any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
No.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, and is your email online, so that I can send you that Mathematica study?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So next, we'll go to citizens' forums. Citizens wishing to speak shall have the opportunity to do so for five minutes, and if it's an agenda that's on the, on, if it's an item that's on the agenda, we won't have to hear from you during the health security, I mean, between the, for, for the citizens' forum, we'll hear it under that item. So anybody that's, please. How you doing, Paul?
Good.
Thanks for waiting.
Yeah. No problem. Great meeting today. Uh, my name is Paul Cross, and I'm here today as part of the Taos Farmers Market, simply to tell you, thank you very much. We've completed our, our year on the Plaza, and it was through the vision of the town to, to move us there on an experimental basis for this year. Mr. Bellis was a huge, huge support, nights and weekends, working on behalf of the Taos Farmers Market to make it all be a big success. And, um, so I am your contact. We'll, we're, um, we have a four-year lease, so that'll come up for renewal at some point. And, but I just wanted to come here today, because you might be getting emails from me and such, but to put, um, you know, a name, Paul Cross, to the face, and I just wanted to say, "Thank you very much." It's, uh, we've completed 15 years on town property, and, uh, we, we love being on the Plaza. We've made some new friends with merchants there on the Plaza that we didn't have before, and it's really just been just a huge success, and it's only through the support of the town that we were able to accomplish that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for all your hard work and the continuation of that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else under that item? Steven?
Stevens Hall, Buenos Aires. To the, the marketing, do I understand correctly that Griffin and Associates has a contract, which in here is $385,000? So that's their contract, and I believe I heard Marietta say that, um, over the course of the year, they are paid, the firm is paid in the neighborhood of $110,000 or $112,000 for billables of some nature. Is that the case?
Well, we're exploring that right now, Steven, and I just want, I, I have the same contract in my hand, and it's kinda alarming what's in the contract, so we're, we're-
Okay, then, then I'll-
We've already directed that to Mr. Lopez.
I'll see if I can get a copy of that contract, because it, um, that, that just seemed very strange to me, to give a contract for 385, and then you also bill for 110. And, well, anyway. And there were references to standard industry practice, standard agency practice, account management fees, agency fees. It seems to me that in the, in looking at this contract, that you folks, you're the ones that decide what the standard practices are. I don't care what the standard industry practice is. If this is not what you want to do, don't do it. Do it, do it the way you want to do it. Andrew, you referred to somebody that you met in, in a, a meeting in New Orleans from DC who enjoyed the Wool Festival and had, had been coming for the past 10 years. Just to show how, how different things are, I heard at one, at the June meeting that was over in the county courthouse, an individual from Taos Mesa said, "It was boring." That, you know, didn't like it. He said, "It wasn't exciting." So that just shows you just how different the views are in town. So when you get people calling you and saying, "I don't like this," or "I do like this," or "What's going on?", just be aware, which I'm sure you are, that everybody out there, like the fellow said, everyone out there is a, is a marketing expert. We all, we all love what we love, so to speak. Mitch Miller, I just know the name, was talking about how, um, tourism, which has now assumed preeminence, I suppose, at one time was only number two. The construction industry was number one, and he said the construction was driven by second and third homeowners. They came here first as tourists. Think about that. Think about people coming here and buying in second and third homes. How, how much time do they spend here? Think of the transitory nature of, of, of those benefits. Think of the transitory nature of events, of, of festivals, whatever they are. Andrew, this is not a criticism so much, it's more an observation. You said that, that events that fill up hotel rooms, that's true economic development. True economic development is something that happens day in and day out, and you don't have to promote it. It's a way, it's a way of living. It's a way of being here. This marketing plan refers to Taos hard to define, impossible to forget. I don't think it is hard to define. Uh, it's defined by culture, history, and tradition. And all of these pictures here, there's only one, and that's the Pueblo, that has anything, as far as I'm concerned, to do with culture, history, and tradition. Everything else is about the adrenaline capital. The way we live here should be the foundation for, um, the way in which we quote-unquote "market" and "brand" ourselves. With respect to this, this contract, um, it says, "Under collaboration fiscal responsibility, we've managed the bud," this is the contract with Griffin, "we've managed the budget to spend money where we yield measurable results." Well, the measurable results, if I understand correctly, were 2% increase year after year, and that's not the case, or hasn't been the case. two percent increase year after year. And that's not the case, or hasn't been the case. Um, page six says, "We will increase Taos lodges tax receipts by two percent on twenty-fifteen objectives." Um, so, uh, maybe they've gotten, uh, the message that this is what we need to do. Um, I, I, I just feel like that, does no one else here feel, other than me, that this is, you're talking about ephemera. You're talking about transitory things. Uh, first, it's construction indices, second and third homes, uh, which supplanted tourism, and now tourism is on top. It's sort of like chasing after something that's ephemeral. Um, there's got to be a better way. And the way, as far as I'm concerned, is grounded in, in this place, uh, is grounded in, in the culture, the history, the tradition, in land, the soil, and the water, in this place. Thanks.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and go on to the consent agenda. And, uh, there's one item under that, and consideration and possible approval of memorandum of stand- understanding and, uh, consideration and possible approval of a memorandum of understanding with six outlined municipal domestic water consumer associations within the Taos Fire Department's Response District. These MOUs will guarantee that the Taos Fire Department will have access to test, to tested and maintained water supplies while responding for firefighting purposes outside of the town of Taos limits. Councillor, you have a motion to?
So moved.
So moved. We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
And a second? Any further, well, no discussion because it's a consent agenda? It's a call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Okay. So then we'll go matters, uh, from staff. Um, we'll go to the twenty-eighth Annual Yuletide Caroling and Tree Lighting. I think Judy's here or somewhere. Fiona. I think she was hiding back there. And discussion, consideration, and possible action or direction to staff concerning the closure of the Taos Plaza to vehicular traffic on Friday, uh, December fifth, two thousand fourteen, from three to six thirty for the Yuletide Caroling and, and tree lighting event. Judy?
Basically, um, we had fifteen people participate last year, and we expect the attendance to be a lot larger this year. And, um, we're worried about, since the attendance is, um, larger, it's gonna be dark. We're gonna have people back and forth. We wanna see if we could be close, um, for vehicular traffic, just so, um, it won't be a safety hazard for anyone. And it's been tradition to close it. And we're just asked, the event is from four to six. We're asking to see if approved, um, just to close it from three to six thirty.
And, uh, I just wanna turn, I know you have representation from the police department here. And I hate for him to get off easy. I'd like to hear from him. What is the recommendation of, from the police department?
Mr. Mayor and councillor, since I, uh, I do all the event planning and for safety, uh, and I've been there the last, uh, I don't know how many events there, I recommend it be closed just for the safety of the children and the people because of all the chaos that goes on.
We also have a parade that goes around the Plaza, and it's, um, contains children walking.
So, thank you. Thank you, Judy. And thank you for what, all the decorations that are already up. I know there's more to be, to come. And it's just looking great out there. So, thank you.
Actually, we're gonna have more lights, more decorations, music during the holiday season. And with, um, the mayor is also doing the downtown holiday challenge. So, we're asking the community to decorate. So, it's gonna be a fun-filled event for tree lighting and for the holiday season.
Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank Ace Hardware, who is giving us an unbelievable discount on being able to light up all the trees on the Plaza. And, uh, the wonderful concept that we can keep, uh, those dollars local with a local vendor. Um, I would also like to, because we're on television, um, and ask the council's indulgence that, um, I believe Kit Carson, uh, will be working with, uh, Mr. Miller and our facility staff in the, does it start tomorrow?
Monday.
Monday. Uh, that for short, very short, short periods, while the trucks maneuver in and out of the Plaza to hang the lights there, we might block off a section of a street till they can get in, on and off for safety reasons.
Councillor and I did put out a challenge to all the merchants, uh, in the whole, um, district. And, uh, you know, and, you know, I put it out there. We'll see. We're gonna have a challenge to see who can decorate the storefronts the best. And I think it's one of those opportunities that we have within our community to let people showcase and bring people downtown. You know, a lot of pe- you know, I know the, a lot of the elderly like to come and just look at the lights, walk downtown. It's an attraction. So, hopefully this is one of those years that we get some, some opportunities downtown to. I know, uh, councillor Kuntu has been a big part of that, talking to some of the merchants and, uh, and helping with decorations and stuff like that also.
Yeah. Thank you for putting that challenge out there. I mean, we're so unique in northern New Mexico and in Taos. And, and, you know, the Fidelitos are a huge attraction. If you've been to Albuquerque to see the, uh, the light, the Fidelito light show there and, uh, and Old Town's made it onto the cover in New Mexico Magazine because it, we're so unique here. It's, it's, uh, something that, you know, it's a cultural thing. Um, and I think it's, uh, it's so beautiful. It, it's, when I was a little girl, it was always, you know, something I looked forward to, and I think everybody should.
And councillor, I did extend that challenge to the county.
Oh, good. Yeah. And all the way to Villarreal. We can, uh, we can decorate on the side of the road.
And Mr. Mayor, uh, Judy, if I could, um, I have a friendly wager out there for next year with the mayor of Espanola that we're gonna outdo her electric light parade. So-
We're gonna start working on it in January, so we make sure we're ready. Yes.
I gotta, I gotta shut her up.
Yeah. That's, that's in the plans.
Yes.
Councillor, may you wanna, may you wanna catch them off guard because we anticipate having over fifty thousand lights on the Plaza.
Awesome. Good. Thank you.
This year.
So, Mr. Mayor, move for approval.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Officer, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and the council for closing it out for safety.
Thank you.
Yes. And also for the decorations, we have a lot of help from the facilities department, police department, fire department, Kit Carson, and mayor and your family, and Judy Kuntu. And yesterday, just so you guys know, um, we wanted to make sure the garland went around the tree. So, we had facilities out there and also the fire department. And to tell you the truth, this will be the first time our tree has garland around the entire tree from the top to bottom. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, go on to the next item. Item C, Resolution fourteen sixty-six, annual inventory certification. Marietta? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I missed item B.
Item B.
I'm sorry about that. We'll go to item B, Resolution fourteen sixty-two, septic hauling, uh, administrative policies and fee structure. Mr. French, I need, sorry about that, eh?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, this is Resolution fourteen dash, dash sixty-two, uh, for septic hauling and administrative policies and fee structure. Uh, it replaces, uh, Resolution fourteen dash twenty-two. Um, back in September at the regular council meeting, or at one, at the meeting of the twenty-third, um, there was a, a detailed presentation provided to the mayor and council on the septic receivable station and what its capabilities were and weren't. Um, it was a, 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 a good discussion. After that, we went back and, um, looked at, looked at exactly what it is we needed to do and what we lacked to make the operation a twenty-four-seven operation. Um, to date, uh, the only thing that we do lack, which we have a purchase order in the finance department for, is the automatic, or the automati- automated, um, gate system. Um, in addition, we were, um, instructed by the town manager to, uh, prepare a budget so that we can do frequent testing of the loads coming into the plant. Um, those tests would include the, uh, BODs, mercury, ammonia, nitrogen, nitrates, and total suspended solids. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, this would be a, uh, yeah, totally automated system. And with that, I stand for, um, any questions that the mayor or council may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pedalta?
Uh, Mr. Bellis, is this pretty much what we agreed to? Is there any changes to, to this resolution from what we agreed to?
No.
All right. I move for approval.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion?
I wanna say something before, before it continues. Uh, you know, I, I have something to say. Uh, my attorney has written a letter to-
Come forward and just feel.
I mean, it seems to me like we're moving so fast, and, um, I'm not getting a chance to speak. Uh, my attorney-
Mr. Mayor, he's already had his chances to speak. A number of times.
What was that?
I said, "You've already had your chance to speak a number of times." And unless you have anything new to present to us, then I think-
What I, uh, what I do wanna present, Fred, and I wanna be treated just like everybody else.
You have been.
You know what I mean? This is the first time I've been here in a long time. And , uh, the thing is, uh, is that my attorney wrote a letter, and I think you received it today. And one of the things that he asked for is for you to give him time to prepare and let him know that this resolution hearing would be taking place. So, he could prepare. He's an environmentalist. His name is Pete Domenici. Have you received this letter today?
I have not.
No, I haven't received any letter from Mr. Domenici. Uh, well, that letter is out, and it's, and, uh, it, it went into the office and was supposedly have, have given to you. Uh, on, on everything that we asked, the girl in the office did have it and did respond to it, that the letter would be given to, uh, uh, I don't know if, um, Rick Bell got the letter or not. And, uh, in this letter, it states that of everything we've asked for-
And, and you know what? We probably want, don't wanna continue this conversation because if it is possible legal litigation, we probably wanna cut this off. So, uh, if, if they've sent us a letter, Mr. Lopez will address the letter tomorrow morning if we received it. If there's possible or threatened litigation, we don't know.
No, but, uh, Mr. Broni, all it is, is asking, as he asked for previous, uh, with, uh, J. P. Caldwell, he asked him and, and he actually requested it also to give him time to prepare for this day today, which he was not giving up a little time to be here today. Uh, he's an environmentalist. We have an environmentalist con- uh, that's also was gonna be here, but they were not notified. And this, this decision being made today is like overriding what we asked for, what my attorney asked for. And I, I, I just would like the chance to have my, my, uh, consultant, environmentalist here, and the attorney have proper time to come over here and be able to, uh, speak on this Resolution for twenty, fourteen twenty-two. This is an environmental issue. This is an issue here that, uh, we need to talk about it. I like what, uh, George Fritz said very, very much. Is right now, my question would be, is how many of you are qualified as environmentalists to allow twenty-four-seven dumping with, without having an expert behind the scene to see what, what are the good and the bads about it? And that's why I was hoping to bring my environmentalist, my attorney here and speak and ask these questions. If it's out of your, uh, ability of knowing how it can contaminate and, and how the loads are being received, and is there an impact in the environment or in our groundwater? It seems like we're passing something without doing an investigation. I, I really believe that you need to have experts here to be able to speak and ask questions, not pass something. This, Fred, can impact our groundwater. The way they're receiving the sludge today can impact and contaminate our groundwater. And all I wanted to, to do is have my attorney here, which he, I don't know why that letter didn't get here because the, I have a, an email here that I can show you. The girl of the town of Taos received it and would give it to, uh, Rick and would give it to the mayor here. I don't know why that didn't get here, but this is gonna be raising a big issue. One big issue that I would raise right today is the impact of groundwater and the way the station is receiving its septic. And the, the type of, uh, monitoring through a meter that I think still it only monitors pH, but paints and grease. I don't know if French was talking about, uh, individually testing a load once in a while, or that they improve the pH.
One second. Um-
Mr. Mayor, we, as, as mayor and councillor were, under Mr. Caldwell here, we previously received a letter from Mr. Domenici, which indicated your concerns, Mr. Rayel, and threatened litigation and cited specific examples of, uh, the EPA codes and violations that you felt existed. As a result of that, the council directed, uh, that we, um, have CH two M Hill do a, um, best practices evaluation of our existing capabilities, as well as to, uh, identify other facilities in a similar position throughout the state. And he returned that report back stating that he felt with minor changes, which have been included in this resolution, and as were outlined by the public works director, that we met or exceeded any standards that were required by the EPA, NMED, or were best practices throughout the state, that we were pretty much bulletproof on this point.
Yeah. That's why I would like to have my attorney here.
Can I finish? So, based on addressing your concern, we did hire experts, in fact, to do that. We found, uh, no merit to your concerns, that we've addressed all of your concerns. And I would agree with the mayor that what we're getting into now is that Mr. Rayel is outlining his case for future legal action against the town.
You know, I'm just asking for a fair chance.
So, with that said, uh, with that said, um, Rick, um, call for the vote.
Councilmember?
Oh. You know, I just want a fair chance, uh, for my attorney and my jail, my, uh, environmental consultant.
Thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead, French.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I apologize for this. Um, the resolution that you are voting on today is fourteen dash six-two, and it replaces Resolution fourteen dash twenty-two.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you included that in your motion, councillor?
Yes.
Okay. And the second was okay? So, call for the vote.
Councilmember Pedalta?
No, discussion, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't allow you.
Uh, Mr. Rayel, I wanna thank you. Uh, I would like you and the public to know that I have gone out to our sewage treatment plant and gone through the whole system and find that even before some of these changes were instituted by the town, that in my opinion, it's safe, it's appropriate, it needs to be opened up twenty-four-seven. Uh, you know, it, I was amazed, Consulman Kuntu, we should've taken our fishing poles out there because, do you know that, uh, at the discharge before it goes into the, yeah, we have little German brown trout swimming in there. Now, I realize that's kind of an emotional thing.
It's 'cause they feed on corn. It's 'cause they feed on corn.
No, in the, in the, in the discharge water. But, Steve, I wanted you to know that, uh, I had a long meeting, uh, probably about six hours out there, and I feel very confident. So, thank you. And thank you for your concern.
Can I just say one more thing since?
I think the mayor has asked for discussion. We, we had a second. It's the mayor's call.
Can I just say one more thing, being an old lady?
Quick, Steve.
Okay. The only thing that, that bothers me here, and of course, it's gonna be a, a legal question, is because you're, the town of Taos is allowing twenty-four-seven to private septic haulers to use government property. And I, that, that's one thing that I wanna see that that, if that, if that can be done now, that should be done in every other department, where a person can actually ask, access government property, not being inside the government.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
So, thank you. Thank you, French.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, we'll go on to item C, Resolution fourteen sixty-six, annual inventory certification. Marietta? Marietta?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. You have attached, I redid the whole PDF to show signatures on the physical inventories. These are anything that is movable over $5,000. According to the statute, we have to bring that to the council for actual certification. And it's really the departments certifying. They either identify a staff member to certify their equipment, the director signs off on it, and in the end, the fixed asset clerk, which was Janice, she was here for a while, but she had to leave. So she's been working on this since the first day that she started. So you'll have the list for all of the departments. There is a couple that we will be bringing back for additional information, which will be IT and communications. But for now, what is on the list that they have certified, what they do have, that's what's included. We obviously need to do this sooner than later. We do have an audit finding on last year's books, trying to clean this one up. It should be coming next year, closer to August 1st, the first meeting in August. Now that we have Janice on staff, quarterly basis, she'll get whatever's been purchased for that first quarter, entered into the system, get these lists updated on a regular basis so that when June 30th comes, any discrepancies that the directors may have, if it's, sometimes we record things as a project, but some of those items in that project could be movable. So it could be grouped as a project, but we need to sort of identify them different in the system. So that when we come and we say you have equipment, they understand that their equipment can be moved from a place to a place. So we need to track those a little bit more carefully. So we are behind on this side, but like I said, going forward should be not a problem. It's going to take a lot of work on Janice's part, though, to catch up, clean up the database throughout the year and do some rearrangement. Like I just said, some of these items are in a group and they need to be separated out, but keep into the asset, the capital asset, listening for the audit itself. So there is some things that we do have to work on. We're going to work with IT to help us get some kind of scanner to start helping us read serial numbers and track some of these things a little bit easier than just having to look right down the numbers and, you know, human error causes some of those things. So I'll stand for any questions.
Marietta, just a real quick question. Thank you, Mayor. When it comes to these fixed assets, how many of them are inventoried on the basis as well as depreciable to the point that we can move them via GSA auction? And I'm looking for just that dead merchandise that's sitting there. Still may have that value over 5,000, but just sitting within our town yards.
That's another thing that she's going to have to work on because there's a lot, there's, on some of these lists, you'll see some of the notes and they say unusable and operable, but until we actually have physical room to start putting things in, somebody has to still be accountable for them, even though the value is less. Some of them, the value may be zero, but they're still using them. So we just continue keeping them on the list. So that's another thing that she is going to work. We talked, I think in our management team meeting on Monday, we talked about getting an auction going maybe in the spring with Public Works Facilities, them helping us out, getting some of those things out locally instead of just on public surplus. But she's going to pick up whatever we can going forward now with public surplus because that's been dormant since Sharon started in procurement July 1st. So there's been a lag in that. So you should be seeing all of those things starting to happen again now that Janice is on. I mean, she was with the town. She just picked up the first day she came and is, I have no hesitation that we're going to get it done. It's going to take her a good year, though, to get us where we need to be.
How often will that take place? I mean, as far as inventory update to the council, quarterly, every six months?
I think for now, maybe on a quarterly basis, you know, we can give you a timeline of what, you know, it's going to actually go out with the departments. The biggest thing that we're going to have now is sensitive items, the things that we call sensitive items that aren't on this list because this threshold is 5,000. So you have your computers, your iPads, you know, verify you guys have tags on those iPads, computers, cameras, servers that don't cost more than 5,000, all these movable pieces. Those are the things, too, that she's going to have to work on. I mean, we have lists, we have a database, but to actually go and tag all those things, they're not all tagged. Like the computers are good, the electronic stuff, because we go through IT, but maybe a blower that you paid $400 for. You know, we've got to determine what threshold. We're not going to go tag a $25 item, but you know, there's still got to be some consistency. So that's another job. So there's like, in this job alone, a lot of pieces on top of being my finance assistant like half time. So, but we know what the focus is right now, is the fixed asset and capital assets.
Okay, council, any other questions?
Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Sorry, really, I'm like speed read.
After this, under 5,000.
Yeah. Oh, you're.
Thank you, Marietta.
You're welcome.
And I think you're still up to bat.
Oh, that's right, and I bought this, though.
Then it's dinner.
Okay, well, I'm going to try to get this on. So I have my financial report.
Are they going to the next one? Mayor Protem?
Before you go to the next item, we need a motion on this.
On the previous?
On this resolution.
It wasn't just, oh, okay.
Oh, no, no, it is a resolution.
It's a resolution.
I just saw that.
Oh, it is.
We have a motion?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor Protem, I wasn't being, so I move to go ahead and approve resolution fourteen dash sixty-six, approving the Finance Department's annual inventory certification and subsequent reporting.
I'll second that.
Okay. Renee, call the roll.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Thank you, Marietta.
Thank you. Sorry about that, it was a resolution.
That's okay. Sorry, I thought it was an informational item.
So we're going to just go to the financial update for October.
Yes.
I'm just going to open these up a little bit, see if I can, for the viewing audience, if there's any viewing audience. Just give me one second. And I think you have it in front of you. So in October's, grocery receipts tax was actually up 9.59%. But if you recall, during last month's meeting, I had already had November's, which we will, I mean September's, October's, November's receipts, which we had already discussed that we projected to be down 1.5%. So right now, actually, I'm controlling it.
Turn the lights off?
Oh, the lights off.
That 1.5 was 130,000?
Yes, close to. I don't know all of them. I can't see. The back ones, I think. Okay, sorry, here, I'm just trying to get this.
Is that two light?
Yeah, that's good. That's good, I'm sorry. So October's distribution, 9.5% up from last year. You can see the big categorical changes was in construction. And we've had this conversation, construction is back up on certain areas. So we had an increase of $38,000 on construction. Retail trade was up at 32,706. Decreases were actually in accommodation and food services at 10,000, and then just other services at 4,000. So currently with November's receipts, we'll go through those in a second, but this is just for the month of October, our year-to-year growth rate is actually down 2.84%. But that's year actual from last year to this year. And we've already projected that we're not going to be meeting our 2% increase until if something drastically happens. Right now, we're just keeping it the same. Most of the departments were in 10% of their budgets for expenditures. There's a couple of things in planning. They had the animal control contract for stray hearts versus last year, police had it. I think that's something that I hadn't reported the first quarter. But that was one of the things that changed that you can see in the numbers. And then Fleet had a couple, well, one-time expense totaling approximately 18,000 for an engine and transmission replacement. So those were things that were higher in Fleet's budget this, throughout this time, year-to-date time. I don't know how to close this.
Marietta?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question real quick? Seeing that we just came off the discussion of tourism versus construction, construction showing the largest increase of 125%, do we have a breakdown as to what that was contributed to as far as building permits? I mean, what was?
Actually, I don't know exactly what it is. I can get with planning to see, but I think in this time, it's probably some of our, maybe Town Hall, I think, was done like in August, the Town Hall paving. So I think it's a lot of our internal.
Our own stuff.
It's our own stuff that we're creating the grocery receipts tax on it. So I know for sure one of, that one is the schools' projects. All the schools had to complete by school opening day. So the paving, I think Rancho, Sacramento, went to a game over there, their whole parking lot paved out, whole redone. So I'm, well, that's county, but still, they should be.
Middle school, probably.
Marietta, would you kind of do a break, not right now, but if you'll get that to us? I'd like to know, see what.
Yeah, I can, I can assume, but I can ask around, too. I can ask the county to see what projects they had, maybe in town. I'll check with the building guys because not really, like, the construction projects won't go through. Well, maybe they will, the DRC. I'll check and see what I can find out on a regular basis. So if we see that fluctuate, then at least I have an answer.
Yes.
So ending balance, I haven't changed this ending balance based on our projections. I did talk to you last month about our planning positions, and so right now, we're filling some of those. So the amount that we need to be saving is really from our current compensation plan until we maybe get through December and see how it's looking. Capital projects, you know, there was not much money spent at all. There was no money spent in the real capital projects. This one year-to-date, I added this in, this is that one-time cost that we did this year. And year-to-date, we've spent $35,000. So everybody's doing their one-time things that they need to get done. Construction, you're going to see a lot of that in the report for probably more December because we're finishing up all the construction now in this month and in October. So you may see some in the next report and then in December's report. But we did a lot of proposal meetings, RFPs, the community block grant, the small community block grant proposals, some juvenile justice program proposals, bid openings for Wymer Hills, the regional landfill, Camille de Placita rebids. So we did a lot of internal stuff to get some of the, all of these projects going, actually, just sort of bad timing with the weather now, but that's just how it always ends up. So year-to-date, we've only spent $98,000 in all the capital projects of $32 million, but obviously, the airport's a big one. And these other ones here in the acquisition fund, that will be showing up in, by the end of December, we should have a big expenditure up for that. And then just debt service, I have some debt due now in November, it's right here. Do you know how to get this part off, Renee?
Scroll on the bottom. Yeah.
Like this little corner. Anyway, there's some debt right there. You guys, 155,000, it's due in November. That little corner.
Down here.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. So.
Marietta, is the enterprise fund on there?
Is that?
Is our enterprise fund for water?
Actually, if you, let me see, I'm going to just finish off the first page. I'm going to go down, or I don't know if I'm going down or Floyd's going down here.
Wasn't August our leak months?
Let me go down to the enterprise funds. Hold on a second here. Okay, so actually, we're somewhat down on the, well, this is the municipal tax. We're up on the charges for services for water and up on also the wastewater. So they're not, they've gotten up, they've gotten caught up. We were down the first couple of months.
How do we realize our loss against the leaks? Wasn't that the month that we had the big water leaks?
Actually, I would have to check with French. I think they send in a report to the, one of the offices of either the state engineers or something. And I think they give that information to Debbie, but we don't really do anything with it, but we can get that amount. I'm sure he has a report on that. I don't know if he's on.
Okay.
But I know he does. He has a, he does a monthly report on the, when they have big fires or whatever, because the fire department gives them that information, too. Since we're here, the historic district parking revenues are up quite a bit from last year. We're at 60,000 versus 36. So that, that fund is doing what it's supposed to be doing, making revenue, supporting itself. We have duty salary under here and all the things that we're doing with the historic district and the leases paying them out of there. So that, that one's looking healthy. Communications, well, that's the story. We're going to be working on, with the county, I've been working with Leandro, trying to get him some figures of what our fund balance is going to be at the end that we're going to resend to the county, probably more to the mid-January or so. Other than that, these are running somewhat consistent. They just fluctuate depending on some of the payments, like this one for the treatment plant, you can see here, right here for the treatment plant. Last year was only at 95, we're at 305,000. But last year, we delayed some of the payments to CH2M Hill. I think we brought the contracts and stuff late, so we'll probably even out that in November. So that's just the October stuff, there's just your charts. We did put the first quarter for revenue comparisons, just to see how they flow for July, August, and September. These are actual collected during the month of July, August, and September. So you can just see the grocery receipts tax, accommodation and food services, and lodgers' tax. So, you know, they somewhat either flat or follow each other, but this is the grocery receipts. But these ones are pretty much, you know, flat, but they follow, sometimes go up if this is looking good on the lodges' tax side, which is not right now. And then I have, just the more comparisons when you, just to try to keep you guys updated on annual basis. And I think that's, I think I have November's in there, but let me see. I think I got to close this. There we go. So I'm just going to open the GRT. You have that in front of you. That was the 9 point whatever percent. I want to go to October's classifications. And you can see the construction is high, retail trade, several others. You know, the majority are increases, the biggest increases was this accommodation, food services, and just increases across the board. And then the last thing is just for the month of November, obviously, we already have our grocery receipts tax in. Another increase for the month. I can't see myself. Oh, I don't. So for the month of November, we had an increase of 4 point something percent. To bring, I can't see that, that's why I'm saying 4 point something percent. And to bring us to right now at 2.84, whatever this number is, I can't see. So we, you know, two good months of increases, but still not changing our projection at this time. You know, I think we get through December, and if everything continues, then we'll come back and, you know, hopefully, pick up that 1.5 that, you know, we projected throughout the year. So I stand for any questions? That was the last report. Classifications for November, construction again. So I'll for sure next, for next month, try to get some building permit information, some construction project information, so we can verify this 40,000 increase. I stand for any questions?
Marietta, on your eyes, are there any line items or any departments who we are, you know, that you think?
French was talking about, I think he said I had a bar on my desk. So he has several, several items on that budget adjustment. We wanted to get it on this meeting, but there was no way that I could verify everything. He is going to be asking probably for, if I remember on it, $110,000 for the sludge hauling because of the permitting isn't done at the landfill. And that one, I'm going to have to review. We're going to have to look at the revenues because the fund balance on that to see, you know, how much longer we can take. That's going to be a big one. Right now. Right now, I think that they're covered through, um, I think through the end of this month or through December. And the other one is, um, I think that's the, the only one. I do see some landfill stuff that we're gonna have to deal with the board on the construction and, uh, some payments that are owed to Solder, Solder Miller. So, those two that I can, that I can see based on that budget adjustment. Other than that, you know, we're, we're doing things, we're getting projects done finally. It's like, I just finished the audit, MDNA, and we had no projects barely last year in capital. And we're gonna, we're doing them, they're getting them done.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Peralta?
I just have a question for you after you're through with your financial report.
Okay. Um, any other questions?
No.
No? Okay.
Marietta, I just want a clarification that's going back to the Griffin contract. And you were indicating that we pay them for three different things. One is for their management, and then what was the other one that we pay them for?
Let me just grab it, 'cause I have one of those.
Thank you.
So, the first one is account management. And that roughly, on this invoice, and I usually see this standard amount. That one is for four thousand dollars. Public relations is four-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty, and then graphic design is?
Public relations?
Public relations, uh, four-thousand-three-thirty. And then I have e-blasts, which is three thousand. Graphic design, which is five-fifty-three-seventy-five.
By con- that's by contract?
This is how they bill. I don't think these are speci- I don't know, I don't have the contract in front of me, so I can't really say. But I don't know if, and I was talking to the lawyer, if the RFP, when we originally did the RFP and it specified items in there on how they would charge, and that was interpreted into the contract. I don't know that. We, we're gonna look at it when we get back.
Okay, so, RFP is forty-three-thirty, and then what is the other one? Graphic design?
Graphic design is three thousand.
Per month?
Um, on this invoice, yes, per month. I, I think it runs close to this amount every month that they submit an invoice. So, these are the standard five that they always have a flat amount. Now, I know Joni says it, it differs, but I mean, I can go back and verify every one that we've done. And then there's graphic design, five-hundred-and-fifty-three-seventy-five, and social media of one-thousand-nine-eight-seven-fifty. So, that's just on this invoice, which was in May. And I know I see those pretty consistent on a monthly basis.
Okay, and that's outside of the media buys?
Right, that's outside of the media buy. And they send in a summary sheet every month, like, on this one for account management, they charged us, well, they put, I'm saying, six-thousand-six-hundred dollars in work into that, and they only billed us four thousand. So, they, they show in-kind services of that nature. But that's on top of, uh, I, an advertisement, and they charge us the agency fee of seventeen percent, and that's on, that's on top of it. So, that's why I took that eleven times twelve, and that's like a hundred-and-thirty-two for them doing business with us, I guess. That's their business, paying their employees, paying whatever, I guess.
I understand. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
I need to bring my reading glasses, 'cause I can't see. Okay.
Anything else?
Do you have any, any other questions?
Thank you, Marietta.
Okay, thank you all. Save me for a mouse. No, I'm just kidding.
You still, you can still get dinner.
Yeah, my husband makes this.
You're right online for dinner.
Okay, thank you. So, then we move on to, uh, matters and reports from counsel.
Mr. Mayor, before you go to that, I just had a couple of quick things I wanted to get counsel input on.
Oh, under others? Town, town manager's report under others? Sorry about that.
Um, the lease for the bathroom in the Kit Carson Museum has expired, and, uh, Facilities has asked, uh, that it not be renewed. They've indicated that in addition to our servicing that, um, they feel that very few people are using it, but when it's used, it's used by the museum patrons. And the museum is now asking us to do some substantial remodeling on that bathroom, and we felt we had some, um, anti-donation issues.
So, that's something you're gonna be bringing back to us, Rick?
It has expired unless the council directs me. Otherwise, we will not bring back a renewal agreement for that lease.
Isn't the, Mr. Mayor, that a policy decision of the council? Shouldn't it be that we just, as a policy, say we don't wanna renew it? So, it should come back as an action item, just, just so it clears it up for you, and you can take that to the museum and say, we don't, I'm sorry, but you have it back.
Okay. And, uh, two other things. One that was mentioned very quickly is that, starting January, uh, there's a notice going up that says, uh, per direction of council, that we will not be doing the two-thousand-pound free, and we'll, we'll bring that back to you. Uh, we can't find that that was ever, uh, that there's any resolution to support that or in accordance. It would seem to be an administrative action, uh, based on the, uh, whoever was the manager at the time. So, again, I would ask, and if, if council's more comfortable, we can bring, bring back a formal resolution to undo that.
Which is then, I'm sorry?
It's the, uh, on solid waste, the, uh, free first two-thousand.
Oh, yes, okay.
Would you refer to rescind that by resolution?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that's it, those three items. Thank you.
Okay. So, then goes, uh?
No, no, wait, go ahead.
Matters and reports from council, and, uh, just, I know there was a young lady in here, and Judy, I don't know if you knew her name, they dropped off these blue ribbons, and they have a red spot here that resembles, uh, I guess, when you do testing for diabetes, and they're trying to move forward with a diabetes week. And, uh, so, just diabetes awareness, and, uh, so, just so you know the significance of these that were on our desk. And I don't know.
Yeah, that was Kim Mietta, and she waited here for about three hours, and she just couldn't stay here any longer. But, uh, she's very, uh, because of her own child having severe diabetes, she, she's very into supporting this cause.
So, they're, they're looking for a diabetes awareness week, or that's in the future. And so, they just wanted to make people aware, so, just wanted to bring that up. Counsel, Councilman Peralta?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to bring forward at this time, very quickly, is that, uh, in our trip to Chama this weekend, we found out that the Combras Toltec Scenic Railroad is offering on December the sixth and the thirteenth, from nine o'clock in the morning to three o'clock in the afternoon, free railroad rides to, uh, families that will bring, uh, not non-perishable goods for the pantry in Farmington to be given out to families in need. And so, all you have to do is bring a, an item to donate to the pantry, and you get a free railroad ride for about twenty minutes up the pass and then back down again. And they'll be going, uh, a number of them. But what they want you to do is, uh, go to the website, the Combris and Toltec Scenic Railroad, and, uh, make your reservation, because they don't want everybody showing up for one train, and then there not be room for everybody. So, the, they'll give you the times on the website, and you can sign up for that, and then take your perishable goods and, and take the railroad ride and, and offer somebody a possibility for a nice Christmas through the pantry. So, if you have any questions, just go to the seat, to the site, and they'll give you more information. And I, I think it's a great gesture from, uh, for the, for the railroad and the Chama. And this is sponsored by the Albuquerque KOB Channel Four, Echo Incorporated, uh, and Echo Incorporated Food Bank of Farmington, and the Roadrunner Food Bank. Thank you. If you have any questions, please go there.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmen. So, did you say, uh, December sixth through the thirteenth, or December sixth and?
And the thirteenth, both those Saturdays.
And canned goods, and it's Combras Toltec, and register on their website?
Yes.
And then, I thought I heard you say something about, um, toys, toys.
There's also a train coming out of Antonito, Colorado, and that's sponsored by the U.S. Marine Corps El Paso County Toys for Tots Program. And if you take that train going up into Colorado, that, uh, supports the Toys for Tots in Colorado, not, and this other one, uh, supports the needy families of New Mexico.
Farmington, and then, and then the, um, uh? So, December sixth and December seventeenth, gotta go to the website?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, rather, yeah. And then, uh, what's that website again, Councilman, for the toys?
It's, it's the same website.
Oh, it is?
The Congress.
Or, okay, so, and so they'll have information on both of those?
Yes.
So, two twenty-minute rides? Okay, thank you.
Councilman, Councilwoman, can't you?
Yeah, I, uh, I, uh, wanted to talk about my last week. Uh, I attended the Noleo Conference in Washington, DC. Uh, it is by far not a junket, and it's a National Association for Latino Elected Officials. It is a top-notch association. Uh, the speakers there are mentors for people such as us new councilors and the mayor to, to learn from people who are, you know, they've been there. They, they, uh, have, uh, not just council members, but they also have mayors, representatives, and board members from all over the country. They, uh, for examples I can give you, they had Phyllis Sanchez from the Pueblo, uh, Pueblo, Colorado City Schools, Michelle Martinez, who was absolutely excellent, excellent. She's a city councilwoman, uh, in Santa Ana, California. Justin Rodriguez was the Texas State Representative. Uh, they, uh, have, uh, actually, President Obama's, uh, oh, I wrote his name somewhere, but I can't remember. He went and spoke to us about Obamacare. Uh, they, uh, took us to, uh, the Mexican National Institute there, and we, uh, met, uh, the ambassador to Mexico City, Eduardo Medina Mora. Uh, they have all kinds of, uh, of people speaking there on reminding us why we ran, what our purpose is, um, to focus on the community and not on ourselves, to leave egos at home. They, uh, they're just so helpful in everything that they do. And what's nicer is, is they flew me out there. They paid for my accommodations. They are supported by some, some incredible foundations. They're not a grant-run program at all. And, uh, they're completely and totally professional. They, uh, talked a lot on ethical behavior, on how to, uh, report everything, gifts of every kind. They had, uh, attorneys there from throughout the country to speak to us about cases and, and ethical behavior and, and examples of things that they had done. They had an FBI agent there from Maryland. They had CPA from Cudahy, California, who really brought this video from the Los Angeles City News on, uh, three of the officials there who were all indicted, uh, for fraud and put in prison. Uh, they, they were just top-notch speakers. I can't say enough about them. They are not all-inclusive as far as Hispanic, Latino people. Uh, the mayor of, uh, Garden Grove was there. He was, uh, of Asian, uh, Asian descent. Uh, I don't know if he was Japanese or Chinese, I'm not sure. Um, there was a gentleman there who was Pakistani, and, uh, they're welcoming to people, uh, you know, Fritz, if you would like to join, you're welcome to join, because you have a huge constituency here of Hispanic people in, in Taos County. And, uh, it was, they're, they're just, I can't say enough about them. They were so helpful and wonderful that, uh, I look forward to working with them in the future.
Thank you, Counselor.
Uh, and I think, Mr. Mayor, on that note, um, I think it, it behooves us, and I'm kinda the one that pushed Judy along to, to get there. Um, but I think any opportunity that we have that's especially, um, paid out of pocket from another organization is, is well worth the money, um, because they're investing in, in nothing more than your time. Um, and what it brings to the table for you as an elected official, um, is, is literally second to none, 'cause you're not gonna get that type of training from anywhere else, because it's literally a retreat of sort for elected officials, um, and really puts it the forefront, um, a lot of the issues that, no matter how big we are, we're probably all in the same boat. When it comes to, to tight budgets, it doesn't matter if you have a five-hundred-million-dollar budget or a fifty-four-million-dollar budget like us, and we still can't pay the bills at the end of the day, we're still in the same situation. Um, so, I think any, any chance of professional development this council gets, um, especially non-veteran council members, and that's why I've taken every opportunity to attend as much as I can, um, especially on their expense, thanks to them. Um, to have that ability, uh, to really bring benefit back to your community, um, is, is second to none.
Thank you, Counselor. Do have one more item that I'd like to bring up, and that's, uh, on, uh, work comp and insurance claims. Uh, you know, I talked a little bit to the department heads about it, and, uh, and, you know, we constantly, you know, not constantly, but, you know, we want to appreciate our employees, and, and there's about almost two-hundred-thousand dollars that got left on the table this year because of insurance claims, because our, our modifier rate went up, and, uh, it, it's costing us more in insurance. And, and this is stuff that's happened in the past. This isn't present, uh, 'cause they base it on past. And what, I'm challenging the, uh, department heads to see if we can get those premiums lowered. And, and if we can get that done, uh, you know, I, you know, it'd be an incentive to our employees to, if they could get them to, then we can use that money to leverage raises, you know, for, for, for our employees, because, I mean, um, that's just money that's going to insurance companies. And I think if we can, you know, instill that in our employees to try to be in a safer workplace, let's try to minimize our insurance claims so that we can continue to move forward. That's two, a little over two-hundred-thousand dollars. I think it was two-hundred-and-forty, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that we actually paid because of our experience modifier. You know, that's what drives our, you know, there's a set amount, and then depending on claims, it, it raises our experience modifier, and that's the additional amount that we have to pay. And we're probably one of the highest, uh, in the state. So, we wanna see if we can't help with that. You know, uh, you know, it takes, it takes a year, year and a half, two years, probably two years of, of constant savings to see that reduction in that, uh, in that rate. So, you know, it's gonna, it's not something that can happen immediately, but it's something that we can shoot for. And that's money that, if we can save it, can we give it to our employees, you know? Because it'll be a savings in our budget, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, the, the incentive should be there at the same time. I think the city does a pretty proactive job of providing the tools and equipment needed to work in a safe environment. Um, so, I, I don't know how the city goes about via its internal networking, but, uh, safety programs, I guess, instituting safety programs in place so that, you know, we bring that cost down. You know, also through our HR department, having, you know, health quests or, or health initiatives to, uh, challenges, for example, uh, to try to curb the very thing that we were talked about tonight, which is diabetes and how it impacts us as a, as a community. Um, I'm sure all that would help with insurance rates and everything else. So, if we can talk to HR to maybe help institute with some of those plans as well.
And, and, uh, Counselor, I did attend the training in Albuquerque with our HR director, and, uh, you know, that's kinda where all this information came to me. And, you know, it was like eye-opening. I had, I didn't realize that our experience modifier had been increased that much in the past, and we're, we need to try to get that lowered, so, um, just, you know.
Perfect.
Worth of thought, so, thank you. Anything else?
I was just wondering if you might say something a little bit about, uh, the TCEDC fundraiser that they did last weekend?
Yeah, that was a, a great event. Um, uh, they actually hosted a fundraiser at TCEDC in the kitchen. Um, I don't remember the lady's name. There's a famous chef that came and, uh, cooked the meal, and, uh, we had the opportunity to serve the meal. I was actually one of the servers, so, it was a lot of fun. Uh, they raised some money. Um, again, the biggest thing was to make a Um, again, the biggest thing was to make awareness of TCEDC and the community, and the number of businesses they actually hosted across the street here, Baton Hall, and all the businesses that have been incubated at TCEDC were there. They were represented, and it's ama, it's amazing to see the branding on some of the, you know, the cookies, some of the, the different, uh, the candles, the soaps, the, that are sold in a lot of the, um, health food stores, a lot of the, um, stores in our community that, they got their start at TCEDC, and it was just, uh, you know, again, one of those great opportunities to highlight them and highlight the work that's being done there.
Thanks.
And we missed you, but we, I let them know that you were in DC. Anything else? Not, okay, we'll go on to...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session on all three items that are on the agenda and under those specific statute requirements.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Okay.
I move we come out of executive session.
Counselors, has been a motion. Is there a second?
Floyd, are you gonna do this? Do you want me to record it?
Yeah, it's recorded. You wanna roll?
Been a motion in a second. Um, we, we're in executive session to discuss limited matters under... A personnel matters, um... Under Open Meetings Act exemption ten dash fifteen dash one H2, which allows for discussion under limited personnel matters. B, pending litigation, uh, under Open Meetings Act exemption ten fifteen dash one H7, which also allows under pending or threatened litigation. And item C, which was acquisition, acquisition of water rights under the Open Meetings Act exemption ten dash fifteen dash one H8, which allows for discussion of purchase, acquisition, or disposal of water rights. I will yield to our attorney for...
So the motion is to come out of executive session. You want me to call the roll?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Cantu? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn? So, um, in executive session, we discussed as council, as Mayor Protem Gonzalez said, personnel matters, various personnel matters, two matters concerning pending litigation, and, um, two matters concerning acquisition of water rights. And pursuant to the statutory exemptions stated by Mayor Protem Gonzalez, no other matters were discussed.
Motion to approve the attorney's report?
And no action was taken.
And no action was taken.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Call, call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor signify, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.